Good morning, House. Welcome to the February 20th Commissioners Meeting. I'll start with your location.
Father, we come before you throne once again today. Lord, thanking you for these public servants, these people who have said yes to do their best for this county and constituents thereof. Lord, as they go through this agenda today, I thank you that wisdom will be theirs as they seek you as the God who knows all. Lord, I ask today that you would continue to guide each of us in this county to be a place of blessing, place, Lord, of peace, place, Lord, where we work together to see things accomplished in Jesus' name.
Mr. Todd, will you give us a pledge?
This is the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning again, welcome. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? I do know that, of course, let's hope you know that Scott Taylor had the group, so he will not be on this morning, but we're going to reschedule that. We'll try to set that for the next meeting. Is there any other additions or changes to the agenda, Commissioner Todd?
I'd like to add one addition from this to all business.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other? Can you get a motion on the agenda and then we'll be going to the consent agenda. I think we need to...
I approve the agenda as amended.
A second?
A second.
The motion is properly approved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Does anything need to be pulled on the consent agenda? I'm also going to pass down a letter that I received from the Public Defender's Office. I'll let you guys read it.
There's a bit of room right here. Just come right on over here. It's pretty good when you have to pull in more chairs. I like this.
Yeah, I'm good here.
Just don't get in my way, I've got big feet.
Mine aren't at all. Are you threatening to kick me in the ass?
Absolutely.
Are you okay? How are you doing?
Recovering. The stone's gone, the stent's out. It's just a matter of... I get tired easy. I'm doing a lot better.
That's good.
It's been a month of hell. Oh my gosh.
Okay, I'm back on the consent agenda and everything. I need to be pulled and then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. There was a motion if you sign and click that off for the session.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. I have motions properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion approved. Okay, before we get along on public commentary, just want to quickly say I'm going to try to do a better job on keeping to the agenda. We have added some time, worked at it some time on there. I want everybody to be heard, obviously, but I don't want to pull people up that are there, so that was kind of an error that I made. The board does want to hear what people have to say. I just want to make sure that we are also, you know, abiding by the times as close as we can. If something goes over and you need to talk about something more, I'm bound to put it at the end of the meeting so that we can get to the next person and get them in and out to hear their discussions as well. So, my apologies for that. I spoke last week, I was trying to give everybody a chance, but it ran long, so... It was with the agenda.
Okay.
So, for public comments, do we have any public comment?
Susie Hope, I'm in Weston County, Tricia. I have a question. I believe I remember the commission saying something about there was a hiring freeze for a workplace. Not for the positions that are open in the deputy's office or terror's office, but for new hires. I see you're thinking about hiring an HR person, and I'm just concerned about that. I wouldn't think that you'd be able to if you have a hiring freeze in place. And the next question is where you're going to get the money paid for?
Well, I guess I'll start off with that, is I think that's all we're going to be discussed. We haven't hired anybody yet.
By the way, I was asked several things by the public is, hey, there's a hiring freeze, how can they do this? I said, I don't know, I'll ask.
Well, what I can say is, at least my opinion, I'm not speaking for the board, is we've had several issues with HR in several different areas. Whether they're valid or not, we don't know, but that's the thing. When we have a problem, we have to address it. Even at a level of, you know, it's an elected official, or it's a board member, whatever, human resources and corporate everywhere, and we are not above the Wyoming labor laws, so we have to look at that. But the answer is, I don't know where that's coming from yet. That's what the discussion will be about, and how we're going to address it, that's up to the board. So, I would welcome you to, you know, be part of that discussion when the point comes up, for sure.
I guess, am I understanding, it's not a total hiring freeze that we just decided that because the budget's very tight, if someone needs something, that we would discuss each individual case if you were adding something?
Yeah, but it's a new position in a new area. And I was under the understanding that if, like, if I needed somebody else, I could come to the board and discuss it with you.
Correct.
Or if Rogue Bridge needed somebody, but just to come out and say, yeah, we're going to have, we're going to make a hiring, an HR position, and we're going to do this after you already said you did a hiring freeze. I just didn't understand that. I mean, money's tight.
Like you said, please come to that discussion. I welcome it, and I think the board would welcome your input. Is there any other public comment? All right, we'll move right on to the 9:30 discussion with Dan Ouch to start this off, wherever he is.
Did all of you receive the letter and the resolution that we printed?
Yes.
We moved to no place where we'd get all of our people in. We were told that if we had too many, we would move. So, it was advertised that.
I can go see if Tina will let us in. Let me go see.
How many people are out?
Oh, there's four or five, but we're not even on the schedule yet for now.
You're on right now, aren't you, on for the proposal? We had a cancellation, so that's why you guys are up next.
William Curley's not here yet. He definitely, that he's...
Let's recess.
Will recess per 9:30?
Well, we can start, I just don't want to have a bunch of people come in here in the middle of the deal and not get to hear them. Some of us drive 40 miles to get here.
Well, I think you see enough...
Yeah. Yeah, because William is part of the original ad hoc committee on this. I'd like him to hear from the show.
The clerk just made a good point. If we go upstairs, we don't have Zoom, we'll get a lot of people on trying to hear you guys as well. So, if we don't find it a little bit packed, that way the people on the Zooms can hear this too, because I'm sure there's some people on there that are here for your conversation as well. Is that okay with you guys?
Got to do what we got to do.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure everybody hears that as much as we can.
I think you'll only scoot ahead a little bit and let it roll standard back if there's not people.
Well, I figured, Dan, if you just see what I heard.
No comment.
Soon as your commissioners laugh, they'll all take the next one.
The clerk just made a good point that there's some people on the TV too that want to see this, so I asked him if they don't mind packing in, if we can just do it here so they can hear. Oh, the secret, the commissioners have projections, that was a good call. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good to go, whatever. Okay, if we, way up, way up another...
I think we're going to, like, go upstairs and resume. We're just going to cloud in.
Okay. Yeah, only because there's people down the Zoom, I want to see this, so...
What are you calling you? A man.
That's what they said to the guy going up to scan.
Literally front and center.
Do you mind if I stand over here?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, there should be. The commissioners would get my vote on every issue if they could keep the weather like this in winter and with supply, coffee and donuts.
Well, it's a large group here, so you guys are set for 9:30, but if you're prepared, we can start. That'll give you an extra few minutes to...
We got on the agenda today because 10 years ago, this commission unanimously voted to support the Article III, Section 3 of the Wyoming State Constitution. And after they did that, they basically appointed us as an app that concerns citizens of Weston County in support of the sheriff's office as an ad hoc committee and authorized William Curley as the county attorney and Jill as the county clerk to work with us. And they could expend county funds, paper, whatever we needed to go forward and see how best to implement this. And so, we did that, and how much history do you guys want? Do you want to just go to questions and answers?
Just your presentation? I mean, I'm sure the commissioners will ask if they have a question.
So, therefore, we diligently worked on it for 10 years. We went down to Niobrara County, which is our sister county, because we are married through illegal means, and we went to Crook County. And we found reception, a large reception at Niobrara County, 100% of the commissioners, and six of the biggest ranchers and people in the Republican Party were there, and they were for it. And so, we left there. We got some good response in Crook County, but what killed us in both counties was the county attorneys. They didn't want to touch it. They said, oh, well, we have to go to court, we have to do all this and that. So, that's where that landed. So, we started working forward. We went clear back to Campbell, or Crook County before there was a state and brought everything forward and to know that we were standing on good grounds. And what that proves, basically, in layman's language, is there were counties here before the state of Wyoming. So, who owns who? The state of Wyoming does not own this commission. You guys have more authority than they do. In the last two years, we took it to the Republican Central Committee in Weston County. They passed it unanimously. When the state convention was held at the lodge, 100% of the counties were represented, and it passed. And William had tried to get it passed when he was in the chairman of the Republican Party, and it failed. But two years ago, when we put it up, it passed unanimously statewide, and it's therefore in the plank of the Republican Party. And it's what we have determined, and I think I want to thank William for doing the preliminaries to you guys, explaining why we should do this. It's a constitutional issue, and the county, we have to take it back. I mean, I feel bad for some of the commissioners who got involved in this monkey show of going to a different county, voting a representative that didn't even live in their district. And it was such a jumbled-up mess, we can see what this has done now. And in '92, I was against it, spoke out against it, and nothing happened. And they said, well, we'll recorrect in 10 years. Well, that didn't happen. So, then they told us. And I think as Mr. Wagner pointed out at that deal, last time, they said, oh, yeah, we'll keep you whole, and then the last day, they go, uh-uh, you're not keeping. So, we have to speak out for ourselves. If we don't want to do it, nobody can tell you, you have to do it. Nobody can make you violate your oath of office, not the governor, not the sheriff, not the county attorney, nobody. You do not answer that, you answer to yourself, your constituents, and God. And so, that's what the other board did, they answered. Now, if you do this today, you're not standing by yourself, and that's part of the reason we invited a lot of people here to support you today, because Weston County is standing in the breach. The rest of the state is waiting for us. When we had the central convention here, there was three other counties that came up and talked to me and said, oh, we didn't know there was anything like this going in on the state. And I said, well, give me a call, and they didn't. So, that tells me they probably went home and had the same reaction, the counties. Somebody said, oh, we can't do it. Well, so they dropped it. But they're waiting. And I think what we've done here so far is just like when the Second Amendment sanctuary counties came in. We didn't start it, but Weston County, I think it was Warland where it started, which is Fremont, I believe, they were the first ones. And then the rest of the counties just bing, 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 because they had the architect to go with. And we didn't accept what they had, we added to it to make it a better amendment. And if somebody can add to this, one of the questions that you guys asked last time on William was where do we go from here? The reason there's no clear-cut roadmap from here is because the legislature can't build the road. We own the road. We are the landowners. The state, when they come in, they get a right-of-way for the highway, and they can do anything they want on that right-of-way. But the landowner, he can go anywhere on his ranch, whether it's a highway or a pipeline or whatever. We are the landowners. And the reason there are no specific statutes is because they can't statute it. It's a constitutional issue. So, we have a constitutional right inadmirably given to us by God and enumerated in the state and federal constitution. And so, this is the best way. William did a lot of work as the county, and let me back up. On there, Trish. Right, let me back up. In the original party, you're looking at him except for Scott Beach clerk and the county clerk, and she moved away. But William did a lot of work with us when he was county commissioner, he's been a member of the group forever, and him and Trish did a real fine job there. And she'd be here today, but she had prior... And she'd be here today, but she had prior engagements in Colorado. So I think we were back to where do we go from here? Where do you guys, you got any questions on what you want to do from here? We definitely want you to sign that and get it to the Secretary of State. Now, in the process of this 10 years, we decided to try to get more elected officials, and we, and this board unanimously. So we've gotten more people in. We've got the county coroner. We've got commissioners. We've got a representative, both representatives, the split. My representative and your representatives still support this, which would be Chip and Allen, okay? And we have the, and Chip is now the four majority leader. So we have some people that will support us. The Secretary of State has said he will support this. He did it when he was campaigning, and then he came back up after he got elected and met with the concerned citizens down here in the library. And he said, yes, he said, I may be sued in 30 minutes after we do it, but if it's constitutional, I'll do it. So I don't want you guys to think you're here by yourself. And this group will not go away either way. We're here. But if the Republican deal's on Saturday, we asked everybody to come because I know you guys will feel that we're in the breach, which we are. Everybody's looking at us, what we do. We can only do what we can do, and they'll have to go with what happens. There is no real plan here other than to submit it to the Secretary of State, which we tried this 10 years ago. I, William, said, you know, we gotta have somebody damage, because he was looking at going to court. So I filed, he came up here and wanted to file as senator, we didn't have him. And she said, well, you can't file here, you gotta go to Cheyenne, to the Secretary of State. And I did, and I called down there, and they said, well, we can squeeze you in and this and that, and that wasn't what it was. But we didn't really, we just wanted to get somebody in. So if he puts it on the ballot, it won't affect Becky. If she don't put it on the ballot, he does. Is that not right, Becky? So she's not being thrown under the bus here or expected to do anything that she might regret. It'll be up to the commissioners and the Secretary of State. And where he goes, I think he's a Christian. I've never heard him lie to me, so I think he's gonna do what he said he did. I mean, the campaign trail's one thing, but when you come up to a private meeting and you reiterate that, it's pretty serious to me. I think he's a serious person. So we've gotten a lot of support in the critical places in the last 10 years. And if you guys do this today, you've got five other commissioners unanimously voted. Someone might be here today. I know Marty was gonna be here. Ted supports it, he wasn't on the chair. You have the five that were in the chair when it passed. I can name at least four other ones that were commissioners that supported this, but they're not commissioners anymore. So what do we need to get to you to, or what do you need to decide whether you can sign that today or not?
I have a question. And you and I have talked, so I might ask some questions again so the board can hear those questions. First, I also talked to Chuck and Chip about this, and they do, they support it wholeheartedly. The problem that they see is it can be put on Chuck's desk, and yeah, he might get sued. But even if one county goes down there, he said, there's no guarantee that with one county that we're gonna be recognized for this. Even, and as we talked before, the resolution that was done before and signed by the previous board unanimously was never vacated. So, which means, you know, the county supports it even because it was never withdrawn or removed from, you know, we didn't come as a board and say we're going against that resolution. So I guess my question is, is how, if this is signed, how are you gonna be recognized as one county, I mean Weston County, with them going, you can go down there and say, hey, we got these vacancies, and this is what we want to do, and they go, great, we're not doing it? What then?
Let William answer that, that's fine.
If you don't sign it, that problem will never arise, so the door will be slammed even sooner. To get to that problem and have a chance of it, this has to pass here at the county level.
But again, it's already in existence. The resolution was signed unanimously before.
Not this proposed resolution, this is proposed that you actually declare vacancies, which have never been done. That, sure, it's possibility someone goes down and says, I have the constitutional position as state senator or state representative, and legislature and its unconstitutionalism won't see them. Could happen. Won't that be funny? That ain't gonna happen, though, if you don't pass this. You may even give them a chance to do the right thing, and get their butts in trouble that they do the wrong thing.
Oh, yeah, I got a question. I was looking through the statutes on this, and in declaring a vacancy, I see nowhere in state statute that it says a board of county commissioners can declare a vacancy of an elected individual just because, I mean, because we don't like them or because they're, you know, I mean, it's pretty defined here in statute, if they die, if they resign, if they're mentally incompetent. I mean, there's a list of them, but nowhere is it said by resolution. So that's one holdup I have. Secondarily...
What are you looking at, William?
Twenty-two eighteen one-on-one. Twenty-two eighteen one-eleven then leads into this other issue, is if the legislative district is in more than one county, in the event of a vacancy, that shall be filled by the combined vote of the boards of county commissioners for those counties. And I understand that's what we're trying to circumnavigate here by not having a dual-county situation, I mean, by being, having our own legislative representative. But in statute, it says that, so I just don't know, I mean, for me to support it and this thing goes down there, I just don't see, there's nothing in statute to support pay the vacancy by my resolution that I voted for.
On that point, could I follow that statute? Are we all in agreeance that constitutionally we are authorized to have one senator, one representative? That's the Constitution. No statute can supersede that. No judge can supersede it. The legislature can't supersede it, okay? And therefore, they can't tell you how to uphold your oath of office. So the Constitution clearly says that we have these people. Do we have them? If we don't, then there's a vacancy. There's not a vacancy in House Representative or District One or Senate Two or whatever. But there is a vacancy in Weston County. That's who you people work for and represent, is Weston County, okay? So there is a vacancy here, and if you have the authority to fill a vacancy. When Hans Hunt resigned, did you call Cheyenne to see if you could replace him? No, you recognized there was a vacancy. The thing that was illegal about it is you filled a vacancy in a county you have no authority in. Because any law, any law that is contradictory to the Constitution is null and void before it's even passed, it's null and void.
Thank you. I agree with that, and in particular, in response to your question, I want to back up a moment and point out that there were some good questions when I was here on the sixth. Appreciate all that participation. Yours might have got the A-plus, your questions, and they caused the proposed resolution, then planning to be submitted, to actually be modified and updated, so. The updated version, that's because of your questions. And now you're back on the theme again. So to answer your questions in particular, I'm looking at twenty-eight, at the statute you are, the one I want that. Twenty-two eighteen one-on-one, titled vacancies in other offices, temporary appointments. And then section subdivision or section three, if a vacancy occurs in the office of a member of the state legislature. And then there's some A, B, C, and D. A deals with for vacancies other than resignations. Board of county commissioners, the county, the county shall notify and write in the chairman, et cetera. In other words, the process starts, it's going to lead to those vacancies being filled.
Doesn't that go back to one-on-one?
And...
William?
And I believe we're here today because the vacancies in the constitutional offices were not created by resignation. They were created by the legislature of the Indian, its constitutional government, but not by resignation. So I think that this statute does apply, but that's just my opinion. We don't have to have same ones.
Yeah.
What was the second part of your...
Well, it was basically just the declaration of a vacancy. I didn't see anything where it gave, anywhere where a county commissioner has the right to do it by resolution. It defined it pretty clearly, the reasons for vacancies or, and it outlined...
Right. And in the statute, we're just discussing, it does say vacancies not created by resignation, the board of commissioners shall, and then it's notify and so forth, start the process that leads to filling those positions. So whether you declare the vacancy or don't declare the vacancy, that statute asks you to act in recognition of the fact that there are vacancies. See what I'm saying? So my preference would be that the board just put it on the record. Don't just leave it for everybody to assume, well, there's a vacancy out there, that's why we're notifying the state party, et cetera, et cetera. Just put it on the record. The decision to make it, and we begin the process to fill the positions.
I got a question for you. Referring to statute twenty-two eighteen one-on-one and one-eleven, with the assumption that the state is operating under the Constitution.
Right.
Exactly, they are not. So the statutes were written in assumption that the activity demanded by the state was constitutional. You got it, okay, there we go.
Thank you. I didn't have to say a thing, I agree with that.
In your defense, when it first started, you didn't know. We didn't, you guys are peeling the clear, you didn't know. When Marty Ertman, Randy Rossman, I think Tracy Hunt, yeah, maybe, anyway, they recognized that there was a vacancy, and they go, ooh, yeah, so what do we do? You guys are coming in on a clean slate. You now said, hey, we know what's wrong, we're going forward with this. You've recognized the vacancy. So once you recognize the vacancy, they did it 10 years ago. We should have done this 10 years ago, but the time wasn't right. The time's right now. We have state legislatures, we've got people all in board. I think even the county is more aware of what's going on. I mean, the deal with our commissioners being sued for a vote in a different county, it was a bad deal for everybody. I feel sorry for everybody for that. But you recognize the vacancy, so we can fill it now.
Yeah, I like the idea, just wanted to make sure we're doing everything right. I had a question from William, because he's been researching, have we even talked about it a little bit the other day, but how does this play in with Article III, Section 48 of the Wyoming Constitution? I'm not seeing how, they sort of grind at each other. Because that 48 talks about required reapportionment with the federal census.
Right. States obligated, and I pointed that out on the sixth, the requirement to district for legislative elections is a state constitutional requirement imposed by our state constitution. There shall be districts. So no challenge to that, we want districts. We want to go the second step and follow the Wyoming Constitution, and it says, and the districts shall be the counties. Commissioner Todd raised that he was some colloquy on the sixth, in response to his questioning, what about Democrats and independents? That caused some thinking amongst people concerned with this issue and led to some historical research, which is reflected, the results of it is reflected in here. I was talking to a guy who's interested in this over in Hot Springs County. Light bulb, you know, depends what county you're in. If Sweetwater County did this, it may well be historically they had both their positions for Democrats. But for this county, it looks like historically the positions were, as one would have guessed, held by persons with Republican Party affiliation. That's why for this county, it's not proposed. The shot at everybody comes with the election, the general election for those positions. That's open to everybody, but first you gotta declare those are the constitutionally correct positions. So this isn't intended to shut out independents or Democrats. In fact, it's opening the door for everybody, because these are temporary, aimed at temporarily filling the vacancies.
To clarify that, and we need to go to modern times. When you declare a vacancy, because it was vacated by a Republican, a Republican was holding when the vacation, vacating came, it goes to the Republican Party to submit three names to you. But those three names come from the county. County why? There can be a Republican there, there can be a Democrat, there can be a Libertarian. It is not. So if a Democrat came to the Republican Party, because they're gonna open it up and you're gonna get to speak and see who we want to put the three names in. I'm a registered Republican, but I don't vote the Republican ticket. I take a good, good, good conservative Democrat over a real liberal Republican. So they're not being franchised out. They can all come. If they meet what the majority of the county wants, it makes no difference whether that... We've had Democrat commissioners. So if he's the best guy for the job...
Or she.
Or she. I don't have my dress on today, so I don't think you're kind of one-sided here. I would vote for him to take the appointment until the election. And then 100% of the people will get a say in the matter. This is just an exercise we have to, but nobody is being dulled out that they don't get a chance at this. Everybody can come and be interviewed for the vacancy. You're not dissiding that, you're just putting somebody in there. And that's what happened in Sheridan County. They supported the Republican people, put three names up, and because they did not suit the Democratic Commission, they rejected them. And you see what happened? They lost in court. So it's open to everybody. I don't see we're disfranchising anybody by appointing. That's just what we do, that's what it says, and anybody can run. And then come, the general election, or the primaries, not that far off. If a Democrat wants in there and he don't make it on the cut out of the three, he can run in the primaries or the general. I don't see where there would be an issue to that at all.
William? As I stated before, I'm fully in favor of a county representative, a county, a living member of this county is a representative. I guess, but it still concerns me highly that I might be taking away somebody's vote when I, if I were to support this. And it also potentially removes a current representative that is in that position.
There is not one in that position.
In the district position representing us, we do have representation. So why haven't you, why have, if this is an issue, why don't you file a lawsuit without the back of the county commissioners? Is there a reason that that has to happen? And thirdly, what did Chip Nyman support when he was down there when it came to redistricting? What was his final decision?
I know, Chip, sorry, I was, I can answer that. When he first ran, I brought this as a point to him. And when he went to the legislature, he said, I can't get the bill out of committee. But as far as what's gonna happen to Chip Nyman and Allen, I contend, if you declare this vacancy, you're probably gonna see Allen's name in one of the three to take his argument deal. argument deal.
Thank you for adding that. Your, first of all, we look at fundamentals here differently. I see a clear, absolute distinction between legislatively created, non-constitutionally required districts, which, for example, Allen now has one and Chip has one, and constitutionally required districts, required by our state constitution. We're trying to get constitutionally required districts offices filled. We're not trying to unfill anything. You do start dominoes tipping over and there'll be a domino effect. I get that. And I've already said, I don't have a crystal ball, I'm not sure which way they're all going to fall. But I'm in favor of moving. But we're not trying to empty anybody's seat. At least not have them thrown out while this is a political issue perking through county commissioners, legislature, Secretary of State, Constitution. I want you all to know that Alexis Barker's article covering the discussion on the sixth was picked up statewide and made available for print and electronic publication all across the state. So some people figured this was being read and thought about in Cheyenne soon after it happened already. It is a statewide issue. Not trying to get rid of any, close any position. We want the constitutional ones filled.
So why, why didn't somebody take a lawsuit?
Why no lawsuit? You give me a required check, just like on TV, just like Matlock. Every series starts with somebody handing that guy a check for $50. You step forward and do that, and then ask why I don't sue.
I know, but that's probably the reading line, that's what I was getting at.
Okay. Good question.
Three questions here. The way the resolution says that the Republican Party will be filling the position.
No, commissioners are filling it.
They're coming, it's coming from the Republican Party group.
The list.
Okay. Are you recognizing that we have a Republican representative right now by declaring his vacancy?
No, 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 no. We do not have anybody in the constitutional offices right now.
I'm taking the devil that you're picking this apart, coming in on the backside.
All right, well, you're going to argue what?
Okay. You're recognizing that we have Republicans in the office by putting the Republican Party in charge of this. Right?
Well, we're recognizing that these positions were last filled by people who had Republican Party affiliations as required by the statute, when you look into see what part of the process do you follow.
How far do you go back to decide that it was Republican?
I went back to, and others agreed with me, to when it was last filled. One would think a vacancy occurs when a filled position becomes unfilled. That seemed to have happened in 92.
It happened in 1992. Lawrence Tisdale was our representative and Jerry Dixon was our senator, and they were both Republicans. So when the county illegally held an election, you kicked them out of our county, and they were Republicans. So the vacancy was created when the, if we would corrected it right then, we would have done it. Well, so that was vacated. It's like Hans Hunt. He vacated, he was a Republican. If we had filled it in 10 days, we were doing the same process. If we'd waited two months, it'd still be the same process.
I see where your argument's coming from.
Thank you. If you wish.
That, well, that's, now it's on this, second thing is, is if this goes through, what's our chances of having legislators from 22 other counties so pissed off at this county that we don't see nothing come out of Cheyenne? Even though we've got our two people there? You've got 22 other counties legislators pissed off at us.
Actually, there are no county legislators, there are nobody in the legislature currently fills a constitutional position. I grant you quite a few of, whoever's there will be pissed off.
They may reside in the other 22 counties. You have legislators reside in the other 22 counties.
Yes, but in the other 22 counties, there are lots of people that want to have their county have a senator and a representative and don't agree with the people representing them and selling out their constitutional rights every two years.
I understand that. And the other thing is, would it be better to maybe fight this when it comes to redistricting? We've done this for 30 years. I didn't see many people fighting in 22 in Cheyenne, redistricting. Oh, I was down there several times fighting for this, and there was myself, Marty, and Commissioner Taylor, it was only people from this county that was there.
See, it's beautiful. You pass this, you did what's required, if you borrow that phrase again, move the law forward, get some action. You don't have to go to Cheyenne to do it. You declare here in Newcastle, Weston County, the fact that they're vacant with the Constitution. The effects will get to Cheyenne, isn't it? You don't got to go down there and argue for it. You've already done it.
Yep, see, if this passes, and there will probably be a lawsuit, who's funding that lawsuit? Who's going to, who's getting sued? Somebody, it, somebody will find a way to sue us. No, you cannot be sued for following the Constitution. It has no, well, you can be sued, but anybody can sue.
I don't want to interrupt, but we've got five minutes left to go, so I don't want to cut anyone short, but at the same time, we've got some extra time on this. I'm going to let Michael talk, and then I'm going to see with the pleasure of the board as we move forward.
I just have one more question from William, and I'm just trying to figure this out and make sure I understand everything right. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the, it's a federal district court case of Schaefer versus Thompson?
Yes, I have.
And maybe I'm reading it wrong, and you can tell me if I made it wrong, because it happens, right?
That's a Senate redistricting case?
Yeah. If I'm reading it right, it's sort of the federal district court basically said, well, doing what you guys are proposing isn't, isn't like tenable, basically. I mean, what do you make of that decision? Am I reading it wrong?
District court?
Federal district court.
Do you have something, oh, you're reading a head note.
Yeah, well, I looked at the case a little bit too, yeah.
Copy the old, everything back to somewhere.
Tell you exactly, when I found Schaefer. Did you read the handout on why vacancies should be declared? Have you been able to read that?
Yeah.
All right. The Schaefer, Schaefer case had to do with redistricting the Senate. The Schaefer judge, it was more than one, he was in court more than once. When he was first in court, basically, boy said, well, there's some serious issues here, but the legislature is the right place to cure any problem. And, I mean, they're the ones constitutionally charged with the job, so you go fix it. Legislature came back with a plan for districting that didn't comply with what the heads have been requiring in other states for equality of districts, because the county was still This time the court says, well, all right, legislature, you didn't fix it to our satisfaction. So I'm going to fix it. I'm going to ignore parts of Wyoming Constitution. And you should too, which I find to be almost the stupidest legislative statement I've ever run across in my life. A federal court telling the state legislature, go forth and ignore its own Constitution. So, I don't, I think that from the court's point was to get the Wyoming legislature to stop fighting its interpretation of one man, one vote. And a federal court did win on that. Want to end that thought with pointing out that what's being proposed today does not fight the federal interpretation of one man, one vote. It says, legislature of Wyoming, follow your state constitution, and the power is given to you by the people. That, by the way, for people that are reading this, Article I, Section 1 of the Wyoming Constitution, all power comes from the people, and they can't just make it up.
Mr. William, thank you for that thought. 30 seconds remaining.
I just wanted to say, Nathan, you said you, Chip represents us. I went up to one of, nobody likes Chip more than I do or respects him. But I went up to one of his town halls, and he was talking about giving out monies to Morecroft?
I'm sure.
Hewlett? Sundance? Never mentioned Upton?
I don't doubt that.
Thank you. Really, really quick. The lawsuit deal. If you guys do this as a county board, if you get sued, they have to sue the county, and the county will represent you. You can hire outside lawyers, if you need them, to represent you. If you don't do it, you are opening yourselves up individually for a lawsuit for not upholding your own office. And I proved that back in 1992, when I sued five county commissioners and the clerk, and I sued them separately, because they each broke their local office. You're not breaking your local office. You're acting as a county commission, and you have the full weight of the county and their resources. If you sue or sued, they cannot sue you as individuals. But if you don't do this, then you are opening yourselves up, each one of you, for a lawsuit for, especially now that it's public knowledge, it's been pointed out to you, we all agree that that's your local office to hold that document. But we have your backs.
I'm also not going to be found guilty of doing something that I did unknowingly, so don't sit there and accuse and tell me I'm going to be sued.
I didn't say he was going to be sued. I'm saying you can be.
It won't be by me, Todd. It won't be by me either. What's the pleasure of the board?
One last question. Resolution 1403, so this has basically been done in the past?
Sure.
Okay, so now we're, we're going to pretend like we have our, our own little representative down there, I don't mean little, our own representative that we've hand-selected. What's going to, what's going to tell me that they're going to accept that anymore than they're going to accept, they've accepted this?
Who knows what they'll do? Whatever they do, I think it's highly likely to be unconstitutional and weaken their case. They get it, this just gets out in the counties, gets out in more public attention. As the journalists pick it up and so forth, it's going to be harder and harder for them to get by in the secrecy they've enjoyed for 30 years. If they don't like the Constitution, they should ask the people to amend it, and they've had 30 years. And they're just, they just rob us of our rights every two years. Time for that to stop.
So what you, Richard just said is...
This is important.
Well, it is. Representative down there, neither recognizes him, is that what you're saying?
I think it's...
That becomes a problem with the Secretary of State. And that's why this is going to the Secretary of State.
All right, final, final comment. Go ahead. Well, what I see happening, if you sign that and we send him down there, the next issue that's going to hit you, the first issue, is in the primary election, you're going to be asked, and whether you do this or not, whether you do this or not, from the primary, you're going to be asked to certify an unconstitutional, illegal election that you have no authority to do. And so if you don't sanction this stuff, we'll say Chip. Chip will run for Crete County, but he can't, he has to have our votes. So when we don't give him his votes and you can't legally certify votes cast in a different county, that's not fair to Becky, that's not fair to you guys. So that's the next issue, will be the election. And they will ask you to certify an illegal election. And by doing that, you are breaking the law to certify. But that's, that will happen, one way or another. You're going to, you're going to be asked to certify the election.
What's the pleasure of the board?
This original resolution, Constitution, Article 3, Section 3, each county shall have at least one senator and one representative. Argument is now we have two.
Well, we have two representatives.
Ogden represents us, Dymon represents us, Chip represents us. They do not. We had this argument at a town hall in Chillicothe, in Upton, and they said, oh, you've got more representatives than you would otherwise. I take that back. If Crete County has two, Weston has two, and a borough two, that's six. That's more than what we've got now. But here's my problem. I can't come down here to the Republican Party because I'm not in their senatorial representative district. If I go to Crete County to talk to Chip, they look at me like, what in the world, does somebody from Weston County do know we're here, working in our party? I have to go there. That's where my representative and senator is. I don't have a senator, because he already said he wouldn't represent me, because we didn't, the county took my senator away, because the Weston County Republican Party wouldn't donate to his reelection. So he said, I'm not representing yet. What am I supposed to do? We're trying to do what's right here.
I don't think anyone questions that. I think we're just trying to figure out the best way to help, and I understand that there's one, I mean, I think we all agree with where you're at, but we're trying to figure out that we, no matter what, at the end, I think Commissioner Wagner has a point, I think Commissioner Todd has a point, that this will end up in court, one way or the other. It's going to have to to get it done, because one's going to say you can't, one's going to say you can, and then you're going to ask a judge to decide, and then we could, as a county, be liable if, if we were wrong, or we missed out.
The Secretary of State said he would support it, and he knew he'd be sued, but he'd still do it. If this first lawsuit will come to...
Being as we're currently in legislation down there right now, I kind of question the timing of it. Secondarily, I don't know that this is something that, why, why can't we invite several of these representatives here and invite the Secretary of State here to come sit before me and tell me the exact same thing? And I'd also like some time, a little more time to consider this, because I don't take it lightly that I'm negating somebody's vote by doing this, I guess. I would like, I would like the people that I'm talking about and I'm hearing things about to come in front of me and tell me that that's exactly what they want me to do as well.
Draw this out another 10 years.
Two weeks, we can invite them.
We'll draw this out another 10 years.
We came here as the ad hoc committee for the commissioner, and they said, go forth and see what we can do. We're reporting back. You guys have the option to do it today, you have the option to not do nothing. We're reporting back what we were dictated to by the board at that time, and we're here to support anything that's legal and constitutional. If you guys decide if it's constitutional, we live with it.
I'd like to make a motion to table it for two weeks and invite the representatives to come speak before this board, and any affected parties to have an opportunity to come speak before this board before I make a decision, so I make a more educated decision on the matter.
Would you guys have an objection to us doing that?
They're in session. Yeah, they're in session.
Which is true.
Until March 5th.
Table it for a month.
Okay. Here's the problem you're going to have with that. When Chip comes in here, he has to represent Crete County, not us or you. When Chip comes in here, he has to represent Crete County, not us or you.
And that might be a great reason for me to look at Chip and go, "Thanks for not supporting my county, Chip."
And then... He, he said, he couldn't get anybody to support, enough support to get the bill out of conference the first year he went down. So, but the Secretary of State, and he, he'll come talk to you. And we have him on, I have his personal cell phone. But you can call him up and he will give you a teleconference or he'll come up here. He is one great guy and he said, "I'll be sued and I accept that responsibility." So I'm just reporting back to you guys. We are reporting back.
I don't think the board's saying no.
No, I agree like that.
I'm saying, I mean, if Chuck will come up and talk to us, I mean, any one of these individuals, you know, it just kind of gives us a better understanding or the commission a better understanding of what we're doing. Because I look at this and I, I mean, it doesn't declare vacancy, but it's pretty much saying exactly what you guys are asking for. Alas that. So...
If there was a motion made in that second and you discussed it, that's a point of order.
I would like to amend my motion to give the timeframe, to give them a month to get out of session and have the opportunity. And I would like to invite Jeremiah Redmond as well.
I'll second that. I have a motion that's properly seconded. Any discussion?
Something to add to, I think the information on this, it is a big issue. It is something that we need to take extremely professionally, we need to consider all avenues. But I do understand what the Constitution says. And when the Constitution says something, regardless of someone else's opinion on what that might be, should not change what the Constitution has.
Also, I think there's a logistics timing as far as the election cycle is going.
We have a motion properly seconded, we had discussion. So all those in favor of tableing it for one month and getting Jeremiah Redmond, Chuck Gray, and whoever else that we, is available, we say aye.
Aye.
As opposed...
It was interesting when he was removed. There's quite a few people that will remember my comments at the time because it came after Ogden reportedly, I guess you should say, because it was reported and then they claimed that, he claimed that didn't happen, but we all saw the letters where he made the chairmans of the board sign that we're going to do this and that and the other thing and we're not going to disobey and...
We're not going to disobey. I love that. I love that part. We're not going to disobey.
Pretty much. That's what I got from it. Reading it is, "Aye, aye, Captain, we will follow your rule." It kind of made me look a little different at Driscoll and then this year's made it even...
Well, you did just look different. Let's, come on, you gave him a nickname even.
I gave him a nickname. He was saved in my phone still to this day as Dictator Driscoll. And I still don't feel bad about that because Weston County hasn't seen him once leading up to this session.
How's your pass?
I always oppose it.
Thanks.
We will work with you, but we fulfilled what we were told to do.
Well, we're going to put you on the agenda for the first of, or the second, one month. First of all.
Opinion is almost an educated form of...
I made it.
Probably died around the range.
I missed it. Yeah. I miss my job or work, but I'm...
Deb, could I ask you to scoot back just a little? Yeah, like this chair over here or something?
Oh, I'm going to be here for the library.
Oh, okay.
For the next Sunday agenda. So is this his chair in your way? I can move over.
I think you're okay, but you can move over, that'd be good.
I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying it's a question.
Hi Brenda. Happy you're here.
You don't know how apropos that is.
We're fresh breath in the air.
Yeah. I'm going to need to switch hats.
Welcome to one's group. Drive it on.
Um, I just am bringing three different items for you today. First being the letter I just presented to you that I read, the budget payment last year in July. And to let you know that we are now at that point, as I stated in the letter, two additional pieces. Using the cash carryover that we had, we're at that point where the money that we were allocated last year would be from the individuals. So when I visited with you on several occasions about what we were looking at, we basically took a fifteen percent cut. I saw many other entities taking any budget cuts when that's what we were told, there would be cuts across the board. And so I'm coming before you to ask to have that additional forty-seven thousand dollars restored to our budget so we continue to operate case salaries, insurance for our employees, et cetera. In addition to that, I will be retiring at the end of April. Sherry will be retiring at the end of May. And so because we're not allowed to budget for anticipated items, there's an anticipated item. We'll need about twelve thousand dollars to pay out vacations that we, for the two of us. And then last but not least is we're receiving a bill from Golden West Technologies for eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents a month for the new Microsoft three sixty-five email system that is used to receive the last of our emails. Again, this was not anything that we looked at for, I've submitted a couple times to my old Katrina and she was, it was being found. So I would like to use this, which one to... To the county office for the...
If I could comment on that? So I have no idea when the library system was pulled over and into our county emails. But if we could keep that in Brenda's bills and if we need to give her an additional amount to pay that, because if we start paying for the library's email, to say additional, entities aren't going to want us to start paying for their emails. She said she has no idea why they were pulled into the county email. She said they had their own email system and so why they were pulled into the Weston Gov emails. She tried to look to see if she could find the email. But if we could keep that bill separate and the county not pay that in ours, that's why we had Charles split that out because, I mean, we don't pay for priorities or emails. We don't pay for, we have emails, we don't pay for solid waste emails, so we're losing two thousand.
How much is the amount?
Eighty-seven fifteen.
For the emails.
Commissioner Ryan, do we need to recap Charles and find out why that was brought in?
That was done, and it was done because we had a Microsoft three sixty-five account. And he was working Gilbert on some, and this was probably, I want to say twenty-eighteen, twenty-one. And all of a sudden I went to access my account and I can't do that. So then it gave me information that caused me to reach out to Gilbert. So Gilbert goes to Charles and, you know, the three of us are trying to figure it out and basically we just pulled into it. And then when the county left, you know, with the new system, three sixty-five, we were already in there basically like we're in the amount and doing whatever.
Is there a way to, is there a way to isolate her email without, if they didn't need it, not particularly, and maybe we're sending ourselves gone by just isolating it? Go back to the email she had or is that even possible?
No, if there was all of her emails, as possible. So, I mean, basically we started in January, so we would move the six hundred dollars for the net rest of this fiscal year and then it would be budgeted for next year.
So Brenda?
On that? So you are, how short, minus the retirement email, where are we at on, where are you at on getting through the year? I'm trying, is that on this paper somewhere?
The forty-seven, our reduction was, basically, like I said, last year I wasn't allowed to budget for a staff member who bought insurance. Because we had staff turnover, we were able to just kind of squeak through that. When I came to you last summer, spring, about this fiscal year, I stated that not only was that position funded, but we would have an additional one, an additional one coming on. And so, basically, I mean, if you, if you figure we're spending about twenty-nine thousand dollars a month and with what we have, we're at least forty thousand dollars short of getting through. And that's not taken into account that, again, utilities were increased. We were basically giving, given the budget of what we spent last year, which was under what we budgeted for, not being allowed to anticipate expenses or additional expenses for utilities. It just, there's, we get a, I always budgeted for wild consortium. It's just all the libraries in the state contribute to this, be able to work with one another statewide. Always has been budgeted for. Because of the ARPA money and list of funds that the state library has access to, for several years in a row, we didn't have to pay that. They took that. They said, "We'll pay that for, you know, the library system this year." But because it wasn't paid for, then it wasn't allowed to be budgeted for. Well, guess what? We're paying for it then this year. And again, because it anticipated expense, it's not allowed to be budgeted for, there's a shortfall. And so this is just a repetitive thing.
God, your carryover to go from sixty-seven thousand to only fifteen thousand last year, any idea?
Because each time we get it, we get, we, the carryover is usually a lap used towards the next year's budget. And so each year we got less and less and less.
You had sixty-two thousand in carryover from twenty-three and only forty, or fifteen thousand in twenty-four. Did you guys, I mean, was there forty-five thousand extra expenses you guys had to swallow in twenty-three?
Was that carryover then because of the position? You had a vacant position and that, you didn't use that payroll money. Why it showed you that was a carryover?
Yeah, because if you look what...
Forty-five thousand.
Um, we had, a lot of that was because of the raise that was given.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
And insurance price, the majority of it.
Yeah.
My only remark is that I don't know of any responsible business owner or corporation that does not allocate for future expenses, possible living. It, it just doesn't seem that's physically responsible not to be able to consider future expenses. And so that's why we're in trouble. We weren't allowed to do that.
And it's not even, I understand that, that you don't like to see a lot of cash in a carryover account. And in the entire time I have sat in this chair and done this job, we have never spent money just for the sake of spending money because it's in, I mean, if you look at previous years when there was sixty-seven thousand dollars in there, that carryover towards next year's budget, it wasn't like we just went, "Woo-hoo, let's, you know, go to the Bahamas" or something. I mean, we've been physically responsible to the best of our ability with what was given.
Could I, if you will note too, in the budget, this is Weston County Library, we eliminated the amount for purchasing books to try and work within the budget we were given. Now, it's a library. Libraries are the home to books. Books available to everyone who is interested in any aspect of society with their life. It opens avenues. Books that are utilized frequently have to be replaced. New books, budding new books are purchased by patrons of the library. But we cut out the line item for book purchases for a year.
I hope everybody recalls when we did the budget process, this isn't no secret that this is happening. I mean, we discussed it at that time, that you were going to have additional expenses. The problem is, is we were not entirely certain what that might be. So we knew we were going to come to this impasse, that twelve thousand dollars is the surprise, I think, to me. But I think our, what are we going to do? Need to find some money. So with those ARPA funds, we moved into the general fund. Becky, how much, any idea what's...
There's, I have to talk to Suzie. We just have to do a budget adjustment.
It's either there or the usual. Yeah, and, and we're starting at, we're only into February and we're hammering that thing. So I don't know what the board wants to do, but I'm in full support of funding.
You want to make a motion on that?
What a, what a count would that be? General fund. I'd make a motion to move sixty thousand dollars out of the general fund. I'd make a motion to move $60,000 out of the general fund to fund the library under endeavors.
Motion on the floor, or a motion for a second, any discussion?
You know, we knew this was going to happen. It's our responsibility to make sure you do such a good.
Also, I'd like to note that that $60,000 that we're so much closer to the end of the year and things are getting tighter all the time. And I think we have somebody else coming in and all the day, been funding. And we have a dispatch that we now have to fund. So, I think we need to keep that in mind for a bit.
And that, you know, the $12,000, the vacation, that's where all the, we have to do that.
Any other discussion? Yes.
We're sorry too. I'm horrified.
Can only stack?
Believe me, we tried.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That was one of the things as I transitioned, you know, out of this position is to have the next person who sits in the director's chair not to have to come in first off and have to deal with it. So I wanted that resolved, and so I thank you all.
There probably won't be anything for carryover issue.
Probably not. You know, there may be some little room depending on, you know, when my position is skilled and, you know.
Yeah.
It will be less than.
He'll take them room.
Quickly, we fill the position. If we do have any laps, she thinks it's going to happen quickly on the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Shane, sorry we're running a little bit behind.
Oh, it's okay. Go to the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Shane Kirsch. I'm the new EMS manager for Campbell County Health EMS and Wyoming Regional EMS. I took over for Shana Cohorn back in September of this year. Just wanted to give you a year in review of kind of the operations of Campbell County Health and Wyoming Regional EMS and discuss a couple of options for a sustainable EMS service for Newcastle and Weston County. So as a year in review, both Campbell County Health EMS and Wyoming Regional EMS responded to a total of 10,221 calls, which equates to about 6,850 transports. For Weston County and the city of Newcastle, there's approximately 633 calls in the Weston County area, with 433 of those attributed to the city of Newcastle and 200 of them to Weston County. Of that, approximately 88 of those attributed to the city of Upton, which resulted in 44 transports. Campbell County Health EMS is currently responding to 100% of the town of Upton's calls along the city of Osage. With that, we facilitated 100 interfacility transfers out of 114 requests for service from Weston County Health Services. Some of those denials come from weather issues, lack of available ambulances due to other call volumes and the other regions, and we certainly explore just the severity of the patients themselves being inappropriate for ground transport to. I will email a copy of this out to each one of you guys after the meeting today. I apologize that I didn't bring copies with me, so I was having some print issues this morning before I left.
Yeah, same sorry.
No, you're okay. With that, we did have 16 flights due to the severity of the patients and provider judgment on scene, and had four cardiac arrests in Weston County. With that, I've sat in on city council meetings for the city of Newcastle and the town of Upton to discuss a couple of options in terms of some sustainable options for EMS services. Historically, it's been kind of a struggle for us to break even to provide EMS services in the Weston County market due to the call volumes, hence the reason for the stipend from the city and from the county. I do have a copy of Senate File 43 that I would like you guys to consider. So rather than taking from your general fund appropriation, there is the option for an EMS taxing district that could help offset the costs. You can tax the mill levy, I believe the initial mill levy that you can tax is two mills with an additional two mills after that. Director Belton and I sat down to do a little math. I believe that came out to around $400,000 with the current mill that's available for Weston County, which is four times the amount of stipend that we currently receive. Now, we wouldn't have to receive all of that money, but it could help offset some of the capital costs of running an EMS service, you know, moving forward that doesn't come out of your general fund. And it sounds like your general fund has been taking some hits recently. Just, unfortunately, it's a little complicated. With that, staffing continues to be an issue in Weston County. We've attended job fairs, we've had, we've visited the schools, we've advertised in the Newcastle Journal. And out of that, I've had 26 positions that I've hired since I've taken over in September. Zero of those have been for our Newcastle requisition. I currently do have one paramedic that currently lives in Gassford that says he's interested in moving to Newcastle. But again, I have yet to offer him that position. We've had some changes in our pay practices, hopefully that will resolve it. I can encourage him to move to Newcastle to help facilitate some EMS policy. We continue to struggle to find individuals that live in Weston County, Newcastle, and Upton to attend ENT classes. We are planning on having another ENT class in September. And I know there's a paramedic that currently lives in Upton that works for Sundance EMS Service who is attempting to get a class off the ground. I don't know if you have any updates on that particular class?
It came before us being last week, and we didn't make a decision on it. We'd like some further information on it, but she gave us some preliminary figures. I mean, of course, the figures are promising. If, you know, her plan comes to fruition, then we encourage her to work closer with our Upton ambulances to, you know, sort of vet what she's putting out. So, we're still considering.
Okay. I know this, the Office of EMS in State of Wyoming is, you know, is trying to be as involved as what they need to be to help facilitate the class in Upton. But again, it's kind of their program at the moment. If we were to get a number of people that are interested in a class in Weston County or the town of Upton or Newcastle, we would happily facilitate a class over here. Historically, we've had an issue with that, where we'd get one or two, maybe three individuals that are interested in a class, but we have 10 of them over in Gillette. Generally, the class is then held in Gillette with an online option. But the hands-on skills portions are where people would have to travel to Gillette to take the class. So, we continue to struggle with that. Along those lines, Campbell County Health did receive a due fund letter from the state in regards to the EMS regionalization grant, again with ARPA funds. We are still waiting on a notification from the state as to the process of that grant. It's for about $3.8 million for standardization, training, education for EMS providers in northeast Wyoming. It doesn't sound like the bill is currently dead, but it has been reintroduced into the Senate and I think approved transportation committee is looking into it right now. They did cut the top end of the, it was out for $10 million, and now they're looking at about $6 million for that grant process. I'm still hopeful that Campbell County Health would receive a portion of those grant funds to help offset some of these costs. But I don't want to look at gift worth or not. So, I just wanted to give you guys this quick kind of assessment of our current service that we're holding here in Newcastle. Currently have two ambulances that are stationed at our base here. Two providers that are on 24/7/365, knowing that if needed, we pull from other areas of our service and help facilitate movement out of Weston County Health Services or Newcastle or, or County Weston. Do you guys have any questions for me?
You're getting $30,000 from the county. What are you getting from Newcastle?
$100. I mean, it's $1,000.
Getting what from Upton?
None.
So, $130 won't do it. Probably in the future.
Well, yeah, in the future. We essentially broke even last year. We were about $35,000 ahead. When Shane talks about our capital commitments, $35,000, one cardiac monitor, if we don't do anything else. So, we have asked for a 3.5% inflationary increase in all the areas that we're serving. We would ask that here, and that's based on two inflationary indices. One is, they're all from the Bureau of Labor and Justice, but one is healthcare in general, which sits at about 4%, and then hospitals are about 7%. Combining that with, if we're pregnant, that we feel a 3.5% increase will allow us to at least continue to break even. We continue to generate some money. That's money we'll put into the ambulances, cardiac monitors. The nice thing for us is if we actually end up getting this grant, then in that grant is a bunch of equipment that will put us in a really good position for a lot of years. But we got that due fund letter a year and a half ago, and it's gone from Senate, the Budget Office, the Governor's Office, and then now back to the Transportation Committee for reconsideration. So, we're not hopeful, but it hasn't been killed yet. We haven't received a letter saying we're not getting it. So, we're hoping to use those funds for capital purchases.
Didn't we get $10,000 in Newcastle ambulance? Is that following the Street 2 to that? Our budget?
The Newcastle ambulance funds went to them and then Upton.
Yeah, so they're getting 40, they're getting 40?
No, 30. Let's see.
We took the 10 away from Newcastle?
We're just now giving them their funds because the contract was never signed by them, but we're fixing that. They were awarded $30,000 total.
It was the 15 for Osage and the 15 for Weston County. We didn't, we didn't have public health insurance.
What is it you're exactly looking for? You're getting $30,000 now, but it's a beg, you know, it's not enough. What is it that you are hoping for, I guess is my question.
Currently, it's just that 3.5% inflationary increase. And again, if you guys were to consider bringing forward Senate File 43 and bringing that to your voters and seeing if that would get approved, again, we could potentially increase that to help offset some of the capital costs.
The other question, I don't remember exactly, I remember fairly with Nick when you had a workshop up there. Are you, there was a discussion at the time about using Sundance as a service, and I believe a representative was there for that. Is that helping in any way, or has that been followed up on in any way?
Yes. Yeah, I did speak with Anthony Vopat, who's the director of the Sundance Ambulance Service. He is in favor of supporting an MOU between Campbell County Health and Sundance Medical Services. So, we will get that MOU to him. It was at our attorney's office for quite a while. They have it reapproved by the Attorney General. So, it did take a little while to get that out, but yes, we are working on getting that MOU to Sundance that can, again, assist. And those MOUs are a no-cost agreement. Basically, it's just a, if we request it, all parties are billed, so the patient gets the bill, not the county, not the service.
From that meeting, we really would focus in on sort of that northern area of Upton.
Right, I mean, I thought the idea was great. Commissioner Todd was, or I'm not sure, Commissioner Gordon was there. Gordon was there, and I thought it was a really great idea. I just wondered if that had helped or was looked at, on our understanding, process to take within that slot.
Yeah. I think the more specific ask, if you will, is we would like to ask for a 3.5% increase to our stipend. Beyond that, I know money's tight for everybody, including us. And as we look at regionalized systems, other options, you know, we're doing things like, how can we get Sundance to help us on the north end? How can we get more crap to help us on the west side? And from a money standpoint, that's a consideration for everybody. And I know money isn't free, but as we look at whether it's an EMS testing district or a regionalization grant that we may get, or even we're working with Weston County Health Services to offer right now. We believe within the rules of Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, if they actually operate the ambulance service in contract with us, provide that, then we can get cost-based reimbursement on patients who have Medicare or Medicaid insurance, which isn't a huge boon to us. It's about 40 some percent of the patients over here. But at least when we bill Medicare or Medicaid for those services, they would reimburse us essentially 90 cents on the dollar versus 38 cents on the dollar. So, we're really looking at all these different options on how we can remain sustainable here. Again, we continue to essentially break even, which is great. But as we look at ambulance purchases and other equipment, but breaking even obviously is a given on some.
What bill was that that was up this year that you're talking about?
The EMS Regionalization Project. It is, it's not dead yet. It just went to the Department of Transportation, the Transportation Committee.
Do you have a bill number for it? She'll read it.
Sorry, I don't remember. I read the email yesterday. I apologize.
I know they had to be on the floor this morning. They had to come out, we did on the floor.
It was referred, I believe, yesterday to the Transportation Committee. And those funds are there. You know, the state got 280 some million dollars in ARPA funds from the state for a bunch of different reasons. All of these RFPs for these grants went out almost two years ago. We applied for several of them. We actually received funding on some, but this regionalization one that was really designed to help EMS across the entire state, kind of stalled out at the state budget office, then it kind of stalled out at the Governor's Office. And the reason, from my understanding, is that the Attorney General is really concerned on the funding meeting the intent of the feds and also being able to be spent by the December 31st, the 26th deadline.
There was a discussion last week on there about that, they may be opening up some guidelines because they're afraid there's a lot of money going to be coming back.
Yeah.
It's going to have to be dispersed and spent by the end of this year.
And I've got a team that is more than willing and able to encumber those funds. And I've got vendors lined up that are chomping at the bit to fulfill orders. I just need the funds to come through for this.
No, that's good. Stay on top of that because when it happens, it's going to happen fast.
Yep. So, and that would offset training costs, that would offset education costs, again, capital purchases. Right now, an ambulance, if we were to go buy an ambulance like you would see driving around your town right now, is right around $315,000. The smaller interfacility type ambulances that we have been moving towards or for transit, those are around $144,000, and that is a bare bones ambulance, nothing in it, like you said. The cot itself is $23,000 to $25,000. The load system port's $29,000. The cardiac monitor's $35,000. The ventilator is another 22, so, I mean, there's quite a bit that goes into those ambulances.
I want to thank you guys for what you do for the county. I think it's invaluable, your services. And I think for the amount of money that the county's having to put forward, I think that's, a 3.5% increase isn't out of line by any means. And I appreciate you bringing it in front of us, and we're getting close to the budget, so we can certainly look at it.
We appreciate you considering. One other thing, I don't know if we specifically told this group, but in July of last year, we added an additional truck to our system. We call it the power truck. But that truck is really what's been able to us to do these 100 interfacility transfers because it essentially comes over to Newcastle when there's that interfacility transfer and immediately backfills here, which allows the crew that's stationed there to do the transfer pretty much right off of that. So, the hospital's really pleased with that. Certainly, we're- Certainly, we're continuing to look at it. It's the best new staffing that lives and works over here. It's just, you know, three-year challenge. And we had two people finish the class or just one?
Just one.
Just one. Just last go around for folks from Newcastle, Weston County, to put in, start at one foot and one way or two. So that's kind of, we're just barely chipping away at this slowly but surely, but it is getting better. It's like another mystery.
I go to Sundance and Commissioner Todd, just thank you for the good work, maybe. Budget time's coming up, and we're going to look at everything really hard, but we're looking.
We appreciate the partnership that you guys have honestly been really good to work with, and we appreciate it, so thank you.
I did have one question for you all as well. There was the, this EMS workshop, it was held at the town of Upton back in October, I believe it was, in a little class. Is there any consideration to have a continued workshop for EMS services? Is there any interest there from the county commissioners? I'd be willing to come over as much as I need to, to help facilitate these continued conversations rather than take up your valuable time as a commissioner. I just want to have that out there for you guys to consider. We did offer that for the city council.
I think that's more of an open matter to answer. I mean, we, I'm sure the board. I thought the workshop you guys had was.
Yeah, I thought it was productive, and I mean, it's obviously a conversation. Don't need, don't need to have a conversation or have another one.
We, we do continue to hold operations meeting at Weston County Health Services. I believe Dr. Belz has been sharing those meeting dates.
So I've been sending them to your commissioners' email, which the mayor said you didn't think you'd use that, that you use your personal email? You do, okay. Which I think I have, so I'll make sure the invite continues to go to you. I sent it to you and the mayor saying that you could.
Actually, Dawn prepared it with a German now.
Oh, you are? Okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, if you send it to Becky, she can pull it all over.
Okay. The only considerations, we're trying not to have a quorum of either, either elected body. We're just trying to keep it more of a committee level than an open, public meeting. But that's, that's for you guys, you know, if you want to have a quorum there and hold a public meeting, that's, we're not trying to hide anything, but, so.
It's just an opportunity to have open conversation on what's going well, concerns that you may have had brought to you, and what we can do better.
Again, we appreciate you coming in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It took a five minute, it took a five minute break?
Yeah, it'll take a five minute, it takes us. Okay, we'll keep moving forward.
I guess, I think Christie wants me to read this because I attended the meeting. I didn't attend it in any aspect to decide where the funds went, but I just watched, basically. So, yeah, Andrea Gregory, the WDOC.
Oh, the other one first.
Oh, sorry. Okay. First, Christie wanted us to know that she apologized for not being here, and she did call in and say that she had a previous Newcastle FFA chapter on Tuesday, Martin Judging Deal that she already had it scheduled for this timeframe. So here's some bullet points, I guess she wants me to just put out there. After further reviewing statute 924-104, which provides for problem gambling funds, it is evident that Weston County will be given the opportunity to accept these funds on an annual basis. This will allow continued efforts and not only educate our residents and stakeholders, but in furthering efforts to provide treatment opportunities for those in need. Another bullet point, I would recommend that, for example, March is Problem Gambling Awareness Month, so it would make sense that being in education during the month reflects that. Organize interfacilitary trainings and learning events, continue assessing the nature of the problem in our communities, build capacity among stakeholders and plan and implement strategies to address problem gambling. Should the commission plan to continue accepting these funds to address this issue in Weston County, the work group would report to the commissioners on a quarterly basis on progress and use of funds. Third bullet point is there is a need for connecting resources and educating the community about problem gambling more than what these funds can provide. Just creating an education and awareness campaign is not enough. When I visited with Adelaide Wilson at the Wyman Council on Problem Gambling, she paralleled the issue with the work that we have done in substance abuse and suicidal suicide prevention over the past 20 years, and the initial stages are educating the community and letting them know that the problem exists, but we have to continue having conversations about the issue, just as we do every month at our coalition meetings about alcohol and nicotine. Blister drugs and suicide, and we must work on an ongoing basis to learn more and address the issue with the resources at hand. Utilizing the strategic prevention framework model from the substance abuse and mental health services administration, which we also use for the other addictive substances we deal with, makes the most sense. It also, it allows us the ability to weave issues like problem gambling into the strategies that we use to address issues of substance abuse, mental health disorders and suicide. Another bullet point, she found is, I've done some more research, and I do not believe we're under a time crunch to spend these dollars. These funds are not grant dollars, and an MOU is not signed, just an acceptance of funds letter was signed. I do not see anywhere that states there's a date at which funds need to be expended. So now, I'm going to read the meeting, I guess, that we, I attended Andrea Gregory from probation parole, Mr. Bonner from Newsletter Journal, Ms. Trandle from Weston County Gazette, Ms. Terry from the VOA, Mr. Huberson, Humberson, sorry, from the VOA, Mr. Trandle from 21 Wellness Coalition, Town of Upton, and Ms. Christie. But after taking into account that the funds provided by the Wyoming Department of Health are, in quotes, "are to be distributed to counties for the purpose of funding county health programs to prevent and treat problematic gambling behavior," the work group decided on a multifaceted approach to spend the funds provided in Weston County per Snow to Wyman statute 924-104. Because the group felt strongly that the treatment side of problem gambling needs to be addressed with these funds, as well as the prevention side, this approach will address prevention through education for the citizens of Weston County via media and learning opportunities, and treatment through education of local treatment providers and professionals. Working with all three local media outlets, KASL, Newsletter Journal, Weston County Gazette, and Wyman Council on Problem Gambling, the funds will be used to provide print, radio, and digital media, as well as launch and learn events to raise awareness of the scope of problem gambling in our Weston County communities. The events would include general info regarding problem gambling and info specific to Wyoming. Media would be focused on raising awareness while also creating a call to action by sharing local contract, contact info for the VOA and the 24-hour National Gambling Hotline. Wyman Council on Problem Gambling will also provide group training that is designed for prevention specialists, mental health providers, medical professionals, et cetera. This training offers more in-depth training on problem gambling versus disordered gambling and the integration of problem gambling with substance abuse, use, disorder intake assessments. And I guess they, through the breakdown of the funds, of what they thought would be a good choice of use, and this is the part I didn't take part in. And this was highlighted, which based on the funds being spent by June 30th. A $725 lunch and learn event with Wyman Council on Problem Gambling. Each 50-minute session is $100 plus the cost of refreshments. These sessions do not have to necessarily, necessarily be held over lunch, they could be morning or afternoon as well. Sessions would be held both Upton and Newcastle. An $800 training for providers and professionals by the Wyman Council on Problem Gambling. Each 90-minute training is $250 plus $35 per participant, and CEUs are available. I don't know what that is. One training is planned in certified, one training is planned, and the training fee and participant fees, as well as refreshments, will be covered with the available funds. $5,496 to media with KASL, Newsletter Journal, Weston County Gazette, KASL $720, 180 per month times four months, 30/30 second ads per month, March, April, May, and June. Oh, 30/30, okay, sorry. 30 individual, 30 second ads. The Newsletter Journal, $2,500, $605 per month times four months, March, April, May, and June, 417 in digital ads per month, 188 one-color ad per month. This is a rough idea based off the digital component and the Newsletter Journal's proposal and the rate from the recent ad for the THC presentation by the 21 Wellness Coalition. The Newsletter Journal would create a plan based on a $2,500 budget. Weston County Gazette, 2,500, 15 print advertisements at 2,215 social media spots and 150, and 15 website banners at 150. West County Gazette is provided global for the above-mentioned items to fit within the $2,500 budget. And I will attest to Ms. Lips' research. I've read the statute the other day. There is no literature on a timeframe, so this is, this is no emergency. And here's a copy of the email I received that there is not a deadline for the county to expend the funds. So if anybody would like to see it.
I like, personally, I like this approach better. I mean, it's hitting several marketing groups. It's getting some training for some of the individuals that are dealing with these cases. What Christie outlined there, I really feel like we're getting, we'd be getting a lot of bang for our buck in a lot of different market areas.
Just on behalf of the Weston County Gazette, I appreciate you guys taking the time to look over our proposal, and I think it's, like Commissioner Radnor said, ideal to involve all media. And also, you know, I was at that meeting as well, and it does seem there is some lack of training for the professionals in this department. I mean, they're, they're trained in alcohol abuse and how to handle those individuals and the, the, and the forth of that, but as far as gambling addiction training, they could definitely use some of that, I think, this money. And it's outlined in that, the grant letter, that it needs to endorse training as well and not just advertising.
Is this, so is this an actual request or proposal coming from them?
I think what it is, is I made a motion last meeting to, to let Public Health manage the funds and decide what to do with the funds on their behalf, and whether that was advertising or whatever. I think that's what she, what they have put together, basically. Make your part of that meeting. I mean, that's kind of just.
Yeah, well, from what I understand, the last commission directed Christie to put together a proposal. Sorry, I think she just.
Yeah, and my motion failed, and then Dawn has to have her come back in two weeks with a proposition.
Yeah. I think, I agree. That's my assumption. See, Mr. Bonner's on there. Did you want to say anything, Mr. Bonner? You're on mute. Can't hear you. No, I can't hear you. I see everything on the board. You want to try and log him back in? Okay, we'll give you a minute.
I didn't know we had a gambling problem in this town. I mean, I don't know. Was this training people?
I'm sorry, I was, go ahead.
I just didn't know we had a gambling problem.
Well, I think it's for the prevention, so we don't have it. Make it available so that people that might have an issue or start an issue to not have one. Go ahead.
So I'm going to make a statement because I'm not a professional, paid professional, but for 34 years, I've worked with people with substance abuse and addiction problems. And you know what? I've worked with 12-step programs, and they don't charge anything. So what I'm seeing is, is a bunch of newspapers and stuff trying to get their hands on a bunch of money to run advertisements. I've never seen anybody, well, I won't say, ever. But people in the throes of addiction are not going to go to a paper 90% of the time and read something, or they're not going to go to a bar with a coaster on it feeding one addiction while they contemplate the other addiction. Oh, here's a thing, or I'm out of urinal, here's a sticker. I don't know where these people are paid professionals, but I spent 34 years in, in the addiction business, and I haven't paid a cent. But I'll guarantee you, I can reach more people. I haven't heard anybody in these proposals even mention Alcoholics Anonymous, and I'm not representing it, Gamblers Anonymous, NA Anonymous, any 12-step programs that doesn't cost the county a cent. And they're right here operating as far as substance abuse programs, right here in this county. They're operating. Why don't you, why don't you post newspaper ads directing the people to the 12-step program where the real professionals are? The people that struggle with the disease, overcome the disease, found the solution, and can help others, and they're not going to charge you a cent. All I see is a bunch of newspaper people, I'm sorry, trying to get a hold of five grand to run ads, and I don't think it's productive at all. Thank you. And then, I remember Mr. Bonner, I believe, and I don't want to misquote you, but I think two weeks ago, you said that you knew of one family that had, had a problem with this solution, or had a problem that you knew of. If I'm wrong about that, but I think that's what you said.
We, we've added this to whole business, so the discussion's ongoing, and I don't want you to misrepresent these funds, Stan. You, you just probably don't know, this isn't coming out of the county coffers. This is funds that's gained from people gambling in Weston County at local establishments. And by statute, the state is sending some of those funds that those companies earn off of those gambling programs, come back to the counties, and they have to be used to for prevention. So we're going to do it in whole business.
I get it. And I, and I recognize that. I just, one, first, a state legalizes an addiction. I'm sure there was people that were down in Cheyenne saying, if you do this, there's going to be problems, but, you know, the money was more important than the addiction. And now we've got a whole bunch of specialists or professionals that you, that are in the addiction business, so thank you.
Well, Stan, just as a newspaper perspective, it's our job to put the information out there and educate the public on what's available.
Are you, are you advertising? Well, I, I think you do advertise for AAV meetings, maybe?
Mm-hmm. Yep, we have it in our calendar.
Do you direct any ad stuff?
How do you mean?
In other words, do you, do you post ads in your ad section directing people to cross that program?
Unless we get the information, no.
If you did, though, you would. Go ahead, Mr. Bonner.
All right. Can you hear me this time, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I would just briefly thank you to, to Mr. Chisinski for his comments. We've carried, when, when notified of the AAV meetings, Alamo meetings, we've always carried those for free in our community calendar. That's all the answer I can give you on that, when we know about it, we do share that information for free.
I hear you.
Mr. Chairman? Yep, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Commissioner Todd for his summary. And just, yeah, I continue to bring forward my. I continue to bring forward my proposal. I did not agree, uh, with the rest of the group in the, the direction they wanted to go. I'd like to continue to advocate that the commissioners exercised their right to accept my proposal and award it instead. I'll briefly go over my reasons for that. First and foremost, what the proposal I've given you is a nine-thousand-dollar value for only seventy-two-hundred dollars. Nobody else has talked about maximizing the amounts, uh, that you're going to receive from this and then actually adding value from seventy-two-hundred to nine-thousand. Part of the reason I made it to do that is because my partner, Rob Dix, people already did the graphic design, um, so that saved a considerable amount of money. Uh, second point, this is an opportunity, uh, as Mr. Chisinski pointed out, this is an opportunity to market mental health advocacy and addiction support in Weston County, uh, which is not happening. That's not being marketed. Nobody knows that B O A or Focus or Twenty-One Wellness even exists right now. We heard Christie say a couple of weeks ago that she has no marketing budget. Um, this is an opportunity to put those entities in front of people. If they would like to use this campaign, I encourage the B O A people to do so. Um, it's, and, and I did ask B O A people to give me their Q R codes and their links. I'd love to make their information of these advertisements, even just as a gambling, problem gambling awareness campaign, just letting people know there's a mental health facility in town, uh, goes a long ways towards helping people with their problems. Um, the third point I want to make is, is that Commissioner Todd, for how about professionalism in the last meeting, I thought appropriate for the committee, so Newsletter Journal brings a marketing expertise and muscle nobody else in Weston County can even come close to. We've won dozens of state national awards for advertising and public service and have over sixty years of experience in marketing, public relations, and community service. We're committed to updating our training annually, and have developed into the county's most modern and engaging media company with the largest grid digital followings in all of northeast Wyoming. As compared to the other folks that were in that coalition meeting the other day, Twenty-One Wellness, um, doesn't even have a website, and in twenty years, they've only grown their email list to sixty-three people. Those are hardly marketing success stories. The Facebook page is also inconsistent, shows very low rates of engagement. The last Twenty-One Wellness event, uh, according to Christie, only drew attendees in Newcastle and ate nothing. Um, and that's quite simply because there were only one or two ads promoting the event. There had been nothing beforehand, very little said. Uh, Twenty-One Wellness is not very visible in the community right now. I think this is an opportunity to really put a positive push on the mental health resources that are available and promote those to the community. Similarly, probation and parole was present in the meeting. They have no background in marketing or public relations. Bonders, who I think was very interesting, um, because they also have not established any advertising or marketing in the community. They, however, reported that they did train two employees in gambling condition, but that they never provided the service to a single client because the service was never advertised. One of those employees is now booed, and there is one remaining there who has specific wing addiction training, and of course, a full staff of counselors who can handle any kind of addiction services. So the training, I think, is of much lower need than was represented, um, in Christie's proposal. Um, and finally, uh, the Weston County Gazette, I heard in their proposal that they're offering a banner website ad as part of that proposal, but if you look at their site, there's no banner ad on it. Um, I've never seen an ad on their website, so that would be something new. There's no real expertise in that area. Um, I'm sure it's something they could do, that, to be frank, they haven't done it yet. Um, the Newsletter Journal has presented professionalism, commitment, and leadership in the mental health advocacy and addiction services field for decades. We are professionals in this area. We bring issues of concern before print of public awareness in Weston County and have displayed editorial leadership and commitment to communities' welfare by confronting such problems as suicide, drunk driving, drug abuse, and tobacco cessation. We constantly monitor it over different platforms to stay knowledgeable about these things and have written dozens of stories, columns, and editorials over the past twenty-five years to keep the community informed and engaged. We've actively participated in suicide awareness training, F I G training, and tobacco cessation programs, and I even presented on suicide awareness with the State Prevention Post at a previous Guam and Press Association State Convention. I don't believe Christie or the group you put together ever seriously considered my proposal or its merits. While Christie did say she had sixty-three people on her email list, she only invited five to the meeting besides she and myself and the commissioners. There were two representatives of B O A, the up and mayor, and chief of police, and a representative of probation and parole. The up and chief did not show up, and neither did the state person Christie said that she had invited, uh, but there was an extra representative of the Weston County Gazette there, as well as Commissioner Todd. Um, in short, there wasn't a single representative of Newcastle government invited to the meeting, and with the exception of Ms. Gregory, the other four people who were on the meeting were all offered financial incentive, either in the form of training or their own marketing dollars, to support Christie's proposal. Finally, it can be frustrating to sit in the seat you all are sitting in now because you find out that you have little actual power or control over other public servants or what they do with their budgets. But I would submit that this is an opportunity for you to demonstrate a desire to produce better results and a higher level of accountability for the people of Weston County by choosing the proposal that is quite simply the best one in front of you. I ask the commissioners to reward excellence, initiative, and professionalism, and accept my proposal, and I stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. Um, I'm going to throw it back to the board. What's your pleasure? I under, I understand, I want you to know that, uh, the proposal, your proposal's good and you added it in a timely manner. I think the goal was just to get everybody on the same page and see if there was multiple ways to attack this problem, so that's my input on it, but I'll leave it to the board to decide. Commissioner Todd?
Um, I'm just curious, is Drew waiting on us?
Yes, I just.
So I wondered, can we, we heard the, the sales pitches, can we address this in old business?
Yes, can we, we're going to move this to old business because we have one waiting, uh, and we have also, um, we have to deal with a couple of other issues that are, that this has run a little bit long on. So if you don't mind, Bob, we're going to push this to old business and we'll pick it back up there so we can, uh, move people along, okay?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll return in.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I know. I know it's, I'm sorry, but can we get you guys ready after old business because we, we have Drew on the line, too, and I know you guys are waiting, but yeah, a couple things run a little longer. It's not my intention.
I'm asleep.
Okay.
What's news?
Hi, Drew.
I had shot the girl, I would. Good morning, Commissioners, and it's good to see you this morning. I will say, whatever you've done with the camera, I can actually see all of you and I can see the room, so thank you for the adjustments. It makes it better for me. Um, I realize you're going long. I will try to make this really pensive for you this morning, so I'm going to start with the Newcastle B L M. We have been notified by the B L M, Chad Crouse, that the administrative draft of the E I S is going to be available to the cooperating agencies only last week of March, and his intention is to give us thirty days to comment. So I just wanted to really, Commissioner Todd, that's really for you and I, that we will have that draft available to us, so it was to kind of mark our calendar because there will be a lot of things going on. Um, I'm sure there's going to be some cooperating agency meetings where we will attend. Uh, we'll keep you posted on that, but I do know that us, as well as the state cooperators, are asking for at least a few meetings during that thirty days so we can sit down and really talk about the issues and edit the document. So kind of just an F Y I that that's on its way. Are there any questions regarding the Newcastle B L M?
Any questions from the board? None at this time, Drew.
Okay, let's move on to Greater Sage grouse. So, um, we talked about this last month. The, the cooperators were able to look at the administrative draft over Christmas, and that deadline was December twenty-ninth. As you all know, I'm participating in that effort to represent all of the counties with MICA at W C C A, um, but my area that I focus on is really northeast Wyoming, where I have all my clients anyway. Uh, so we did submit comments. We are now being notified. There were some, there were some places in the administrative draft that we were hoping to be able to see that again. It doesn't appear as though we're going to get that opportunity. So the draft D I I S is scheduled to come out in early to mid-March. We don't have an exact date. It will be a ninety-day public comment period, and we will have a lot to do. So our spring is lining up, at least my spring is lining up, to be very busy and overlapping with multiple documents. So that's just to keep you posted. Um, once we get an exact date, we'll send that out to you. Any questions on Sage grouse?
None at this time?
I, I will, okay, wonderful. Um, let's move on to Black Hills National Forest. So just so you know, you're aware that the final assessments have come out. Um, Jeannie and I and Caleb, Sarah, the conservation districts, will be working with our partners in South Dakota to really go through those assessments, really to identify what was changed from our comments that were submitted on the draft to the final. Are there still some data gaps? Um, I, help us identify the change for need, and then also that will assist us with scoping comments when the E I S starts for the, for revising the Black Hills National Forest Plan. We do not know when that's going to be yet. We've been told this spring, so we're going to try to get all of that done by the end of March, first part of April. Um, I'm sure we'll be reaching out and certainly to get your input, and if you have any questions on that, you can ask at any time. I don't know if Caleb's in the room, but, uh, that's our plan on, that's our plan on Black Hills. So are there any questions on Black Hills?
Yeah, they didn't have any updates, right, Drew? I mean, that, the meeting that was scheduled, they canceled it, just, there's, there's no training.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, correct, Commissioner. Um, we canceled it. That really is a meeting that we have monthly that we drive, so it's really myself and the two consultants from South Dakota that drive that meeting. There weren't any big updates. We do have a new supervisor that has been appointed to that position, and he's kind of just getting in and getting his feet wet. We're hoping that he stays through the duration of the plan revision, um, but we didn't have anything pressing, so we went ahead and canceled in February. We are on for that meeting the second Wednesday of March. Um, I do want to talk to you all, so I think most of you are aware that I organized a meeting really for Congress in Campbell Counties to go back to Washington, D.C. the first week of February. We meet with several entities. Um, we did meet with the B L M director about multiple things, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but we also met with the Forest Service. We had a very long discussion regarding old growth and your comments that you submitted as well. Um, they realized that maybe they, they missed a few things. One, when they decided to do an E I S, we should have been included to be asked to, to participate as cooperating agencies, and they didn't. As a rethresher of that old growth forced E I S, they decided to do the E I S. It will amend a hundred and twenty-eight plans and grasslands across the country. It does include Thunder Basin, and it does include Black Hills. So they want this unified, top-down, one-size-fits-all approach. We're not necessarily supportive of that. We believe it's better handled during our plan revision process in the Black Hills at the local level. We also had a long discussion about the fact that counties were not asked to participate as cooperating agencies. They realized that that probably wasn't the best approach, and so we're now working with the state and working with the Forest Service at the national level to try to see how they're going to incorporate us into that process as cooperating agencies. If you'll recall on the Federal Register, they indicated already that the draft D I S should be out in May or June with a ninety-day public comment period, with the final E I S being out in January of twenty-five, and so things are already moving and we're not at the table. So I just want you to know that we're in discussions with the state and the Forest Service trying to decide how they're going to incorporate local governments into that planning process. Are there any questions on that?
No, Commissioner, no, no questions at this time.
Okay. Um, I do want to go back to just, to the B L M conservation rule real quickly. We did meet with the director and, um, probably disagreed on, on most everything of the conversation, but I think the most relevant point for, for you all is that the final conservation rule is going to come out, I suspect, this spring. So I suspect in March or April, we're going to see the final. Um, we're going to have to take a very hard look at that to see how that's going to mesh with your county plans and with all of the other socioeconomic impacts that it could affect. So we are going to see it. They did hear loud and clear our concerns about it and assured us that we will be seeing changes in the final. I'm just not sure that the perspectives are going to be consistent. So that's a nice way to say, I'm sure we're not going to like it, but it will be coming out this spring as well. Any questions on that?
No questions.
So the final thing I wanted to talk to you about, I wasn't able to see, talk with Commissioner Wagner while we were at W C C, talk about a general contract for natural resource issues. For example, everything that I'm doing for you right now falls under F N R P funding, so most of it is picked up under some sort of contract, but there are some things that fall through the cracks, such as the old growth comments that I just did for you. I did do those pro bono. So, um, we talked about maybe putting a general contract in place for things that you would like me to assist you with that fall through the cracks on F N R P. We did just do that with Crip County. So I thought I would bring that to your attention, and if it's something that you would like to consider, I'm happy to draft a proposal for your consideration in March. You just let me know how you want to handle it.
I, well, comment on that is Drew's a professional on a lot of this stuff that is way above our heads. Uh, just on the old growth, her, she took care of that for us, basically, and I think it'd be money well spent if we keep her on board, especially on things that F N R P doesn't cover, so.
Drew, are you able to put that proposal together and get it back to us and pump that contract that you're talking about?
Absolutely, Commissioners. I will get that to you. I'll get it in advance, so if you need your county attorney to look at it, they can do so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration. With that, that concludes my report. Are there any other questions for me?
No more questions? None at this time. Thank you, as always.
Appreciate your support, Commissioners. There's a lot going on, so we'll touch base with you in March. Don't hesitate to reach out before then. Thank you.
Thanks, Drew. Thank you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the Newsletter Journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New P Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Okay, I'll go right in.
We won't pretend we're on time, we're just catching up.
Here we go, here's from the four H kids. There you go.
You washed your hand.
Your wife will be super excited. So the Cloverbots met last week, and we talked a lot about community service, and then they made a friendship tea and the sugar scrubs, and their challenge was, is that they got to keep one, and then they had to gift the rest of it. So this is part of their challenge was, um, gifting out, um, and doing some community service. So that's been something we're.
Thanks, Sarah.
Perfect. If I can use this one, just pop it up, and then I'll give that one to you, so. So super exciting. We're up to 173 youth as of this morning enrolled in 4H across the county. Forty-four project areas with 32 volunteers enrolled. So we're actually just a smidge above where we were last year, which is exciting. I think we'll continue to grow as some more of my promotion stuff kind of takes hold. Word of mouth is definitely where I'm seeing the most growth, which is exciting, that the kids are really promoting the program, and the parents are seeing the value there. So this month, we focused a lot on community service. So several of the clubs did Valentine cards and cookies for the My Golden Valentine Project that the community did. So they delivered 357 bags of Valentine goodies across the county, which was really fun. It was a fun way for the kids to be involved. So the Food Fund and 4H group that met with me, we did our regular baking, and then we also made some cookies. And then several of the other clubs did as well. The Upton Prairie and Pines 4H Club did Valentine's Day cookies for the senior center in Upton last night. The Elk Mountain Outlaws did a bunch of dog blankets for the animal shelter. And several of the 4H clubs have helped at the Bread Office. So just some really fun ways that we are giving back to the community, which is something that 4H really stresses and that I have been really encouraging our clubs and members to get involved in. So we did Beef Way In and Tagging the 21st of January. We had 28 4H and FFA youth tag 37 beef, which is up from 23 youth and 30 beef in 2023. So that was really exciting to see that the beef side is growing. The barn should be really full at County Fair, so that'll be exciting. The Cloverbuds, there's 32 of them enrolled across the county, which is awesome. When you think of that's 32 kiddos ages five to seven that are hopefully going to fall in love with 4H at that age and follow the program all the way through, so I'm really excited. The middle and bottom picture on there, the middle one is them reciting the 4H pledge last week and then them making their snacks. So that's a really important piece of our club meetings. When we do the Cloverbuds is we work on the pledge, and we do a healthy snack that the kids get to assemble themselves. So it's really fun for them to get their hands on and do some activities. So upcoming events, Cloverbud meetings will continue through April. We'll take May off, and then they'll get to participate in camp. So shooting sports practices, our second six-week session just kicked off last night. So lots of great things going on there. Newcastle is now shooting 22 pistol and rifle, and Upton is shooting air pistol and rifle for the next six weeks. And each of the six-week sessions ends with a county shoot. So we collect the scores that evening, and then that's what goes towards the year-end event. And we're aiming for June 17th will be our year-end barbecue. So that'll be a fun one there. So Food Fund and 4H will continue in March and April for the year. Our dog practices are set to begin on Sunday. And I think that program is going to see some really good growth after the last two summers of really active leader participation. So that one, I'm super excited for the kids to really continue their growth there. So we have the ability to leave our agility equipment set up at the fairgrounds and the sheep barn all winter long, which has been huge for the program. The kids get to go in and practice. So once the leaders certify the kids and the dogs to be safe on the equipment, they can go and use it at their will. And then we have practices where they work and challenge the kids on new skills. So that's been a huge one there. I actually have two new dog leaders that have stepped up and joined. So I think our program is just really going to take off some more this year. So club meetings continue. There are several often opportunities for volunteer trainings. Then the state is actually doing a series of four Zoom trainings. The next one will be in March. And then we're actually, I'm on the planning committee for the 4H Volunteer Summit that's going to happen in Casper in September. So it'll be the first time in nine years that we'll have done a statewide volunteer training. And we're really excited about that, just offering some really fun activities that they can take home. But we're also looking at bringing in some of like the mental health training and some of those, maybe a little harder subjects, just to give our leaders some more skills to have in their toolboxes. And then 4H Camp Planning Meetings have started. It's tentatively, 4H Camp is going to be here in the blink of an eye. So we're excited to head back to Malloway. I got the contract up there yesterday. So we'll hopefully have our 100 and some youth. And no, escaped from those to ruin this year. So that'll hopefully go smoothly. We just redid the Weston County Farm School application and rules. So that program is a partnership between the Extension Offices, Extension Office, the two FFA programs, the Weston County Junior Livestock Committee, and the Fair Board to allow youth enrolled in 4H and FFA to house market animals at the fairgrounds from April 1st until two weeks after State Fair. So it gives these town kids, or maybe even if you live just on the edge of town, but you don't have the facilities to house those market animals, a place to have them for the summer so they can have swine goats, lambs, poultry, and rabbits. And the application to utilize that program is March 20th. So we've kind of started to really spread that out. And hopefully, we'll have some families utilize it. I had a family both of the previous two summers housed pigs at the fairgrounds. So it's a really neat opportunity for those kids. It was just time for a kind of an update of that application and go over the rules. So the nice thing with that is if they house animals there, they will work really closely with their animal superintendents for County Fair to answer those questions and offer some guidance. So it's a really great learning opportunity for these kids to maybe step into those livestock projects that wouldn't have the opportunity otherwise. And then this time of the year, it seems like we toss in a lot of professional development on our parts. So there's been a, I swear, there's a Zoom training like once a week of something. But it's like, here's a great opportunity to do that. And then the state 4H office is offering an in-person training in April in Casper. So I'll go for a couple days. We're going to focus a lot on the youth mental health. Kristi Liff is actually who's presenting that training for all of the 4H educators in the state. So I'm excited for that, just again, to have one more toolbox in my repertoire of dealing with kids to have with some other exciting things. The Newsletter Journal had Food Fund and 4H on the front page of the paper last week. So that was a really exciting thing to see us getting some really positive coverage there. And then another project I'm working on is these Wyoming 4H Project Blueses. There were, I think there's five or six of us educators that put in and got a grant to do some project-specific camps across the state. The first one is going to be held in Musk on April 6th, and it's going to focus on the creative arts. So we're going to do some food nutrition, canning, some food preservation. There's going to be a quilting aspect and some cake decorating. We're going to follow it up with, there's, there'll be four others. The second one will focus on small animal projects, so rabbits, dogs, poultry, and cats and pocket pets the following week, on April 13th in Casper. In May, we're doing one on expressive arts. So it'll look at like visual arts, welding, those type of projects. And then To Be Determined is one that's going to be more of like a traditional like outdoor recreation camp-type event that will be an overnight one. And then we'll have a STEM one. But it's looking like it'll probably be fall before that, when all the pieces come together. So giving the kids a little more opportunity for some very project-specific learning that they're interested in. So just lots of really fun, exciting things coming up for the 4H program. I hope you guys enjoy reading the chatter every month. I know it's a little long, but lots of really great things. And anytime you'd love to show up, we would love to have you pop into any of those events. Sometimes they're a little chaotic. We had 11 Cloverbuds at my office last Thursday, which is almost more than fit in my office to do activities. So trying to figure out, you know, whether we're going to move to the fairgrounds for some of those activities or what our plan is there so that we can continue to grow that and hopefully encourage all 32 of those kiddos to participate. So any questions about any of the 4H stuff happening in my world?
No questions.
Thank you. And then on the extension side of things, the pesticide class was rescheduled to March 1st from 12 to 4:00. It is at the fairgrounds. That is the training to get your, not your commercial, your private pesticide applicator license. You have to complete that class once every five years. So that is coming up, March 1st from 12 to 4:00 p.m. On March 11th, Mary Martin is coming back to do a board training from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the fairgrounds. The final details, fingers crossed, should be released on that one. We're hoping to have the flyers out here in the next day or two. They're just working out some of the details there. And then UW hired the first, and they call her, her program is called Worth. So it's the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Tourism and Hospitality Educator for the state. She's based out of Casper. And she has a really great class called Hospitality is Color that she's kind of wanting to bring out into the state. So we're hoping maybe spring or summer that she will come and offer that class. I actually took kind of the shortened version of it when we were at Epic Art Extension Conference in November. It's really fantastic. And I think that it would be something that would be applicable across all of Weston County. So whether you, you know, whether it's the Commissioners or our boards or just our local businesses. So as we kind of continue to put those details together, I'll share those with you guys. And then the traditional 4H intern program that we've had for the last, I don't know, 15 or 20 years, kind of in the model that it's been, has transitioned into AmeriCorps Vista Volunteers. So each of the counties has the opportunity to host a Vista Volunteer for 16 weeks over the summer and a little bit into the fall. So we are in the process of finding out what project, kind of what project area maybe they will tackle to help expand our reach of Weston County Extension. And so it's a really neat program because you don't have to be a college-age student. So in the past, it was basically you had to be a college student and taking a class to do this. So the AmeriCorps Vista Volunteer, the only requirement is they have to be over the age of 17. They will get a monthly stipend, and then at the end of it, they get a, it's a little over $2,800 educational stipend. So even if it's a parent that has kiddos that maybe are in college, they can work for us as that Vista Volunteer and then gift that educational stipend or educational award to a child or a grandchild. So this is, it's kind of a new thing, trying to sort through all of that. But fingers crossed, we'll maybe find somebody to fill that position in our office for the summer and give us one more person to accomplish that much more. So that's the rest of Extension.
We appreciate it very much. Thank you for all your efforts. Continue to make the progress.
Thank you. And enjoy your tea and sugar scrub.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes. If there's anything you can do to help, we'll, we're certainly more than willing to. So enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
Yes. You're welcome.
We're going to grab Suzie, put her in there, and then we'll shift to some business. Sorry for the delay.
So I just wanted to come talk to you about who are, oh, who are Kim, Jana? The Second Annual Funding Summit that's being held in Riverton. It's being presented by John Brasso and Cynthia Wallace and Governor Matt Gordon. And it's just free grant training for all local governments and municipalities to go learn how to research, apply for, and put on some grant management training and that. It'll be held April 8th through 12th. I would just like to go to this training to help the county start securing some grants and helping fund some of the projects that we have. Yep, so the total cost, I'd estimate it to be $1,262.86. Break that down if you want, the hotel, mileage.
And that's, I know you had talked about this last week a little bit, or last meeting, excuse me. And is there not, you're asking, we want it outside the budget? Does that have a true question?
Outside my budget, yes.
Just curious, did anybody else want to go? Or was it just you kind of wanting to go? Anybody from any other offices?
So if I have another employee by then, I would like to send someone. I had someone in my office street, but she left. I might have a 15-year-old by the way. No. Because it would be beneficial to have someone from my office and Suzie's office both again. So if I do have someone by then.
It would just be a hotel room with a...
Right.
Maybe carpool or something.
Yeah, they would. If it's someone.
You'd need a lot of them.
Good. I think we'd, you know, very beneficial to have both offices if we can. And then also it helps the other entities out there when they have grants, bringing them in first, filling them out, and probably we put up solid resources to be had. Knock down dragouts on some grant stuff, which a little more guidance would be nice.
Well, now, to what extent is this going to be?
Well, I'm sure there's some, how to administer them and, you know, the tracking.
And anybody's welcome to go there. I mean, if you guys got somebody you send out there. It's a free class, other than the cost to get there and the...
I'm going to tell you from our office, the, we have hundreds of grants right now that we administer. And it's a lot. And between our office and Suzie's office, we try to keep them straight. But if the entity doesn't come to us and tell us that they even have one going on, it's a bit difficult. It is. And they all come through us.
So if we print two, it would be $2,575.79. Talking to people, probably less, you know, gas or whatever. You could shorten that up a little bit because you'd be carpooling. But that's what it would be.
And then the question would be, could they use your guys' credit card or they use my credit card, and then you guys will need that? They would use the offices. And then just, because it doesn't come out of that account. It would, it would be on Suzie's charge, but then it would come out of whatever account you guys designate when it comes out of it.
That makes a motion to authorize, do a video search to grant training in Riverton in April, from April 8th to 12th, with the expense of the discussion.
I have a motion properly sectioned for the discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passed? All right, so continuing on with the whole business. I guess we jump back into this. Wellness 21 deal, and then we'll go to both sides in the chair. So we're back on for the Wellness 21 issue. It's the pleasure of the board. Mr. Bonner, if you're still there, we're going back to that. Can you hear me?
I'm still here. You're a gentleman.
Okay. Commissioner.
I guess for myself, because we just got this information, I would like to... I would like to maybe put table this and let us look at both, you know, both proposals and then come back next time and go on.
Do they get a motion for that? Go ahead, motion.
I, yeah, I don't think that's a problem. But I would like, just for the reason I asked, for the brief period, there's highlights that I wanted to say that, of what other counties are doing with the funds, real quick. And there's marketing and education to include local media, fact sheets, posters, development of a county-specific employee support guide for businesses, employers, development of local websites, work with adult treatment court to screen for problematic gambling behavior and refer to treatment, work with local mental health center providers to fund training and treating patients of problematic gambling behavior. Another thought that Angie and I batted with each other was, a lot of these peoples, folks that might have addiction problems, there could be issues with funding, even getting treatment, because it's not free to go to the VOA. And a way to potentially help make that for those folks. And, which I don't want to be incurred into of something like that. I would prefer that that would be something that public health would monitor. There, there's, very few of the counties have actually expended the funding at this point, is from what Andy told me. There's a lot of, under, not, I guess, guidance because this is a new thing.
I'd like to make a motion to table this issue and allow us to look at the information that Commissioner Todd brought forth from the meeting and compare it to Mr. Bonner's, and then make a decision.
Are we okay for the next meeting, or are you, what timeframe you guys want? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, no, go ahead.
I'll say, I'll say at the next meeting.
Do I have a motion, or a second?
A second for discussion.
I have a motion properly second discussion.
The only problem I have with this is, what this rings to me is funding for mental health use, not funding for the county commissioners decide what the funding goes to necessarily, but to allocate it to a professional that we have to then figure out how those funds are best expended within the county to be used. I mean, I'm not, I like Vera's idea, I do, but I also don't like the idea of on a yearly basis, we're telling, we're getting these funds and then we make the decision with how they get spent necessarily. I think we have a professional in place. It's similar to me then going down to the fair board and telling them that I'm gonna tell you how to spend your funds, I guess. That's kind of how I feel with these funds, I guess, but.
Any other discussion?
Can I just say something real quick, because Mr. Bonner's here and I want to throw it up? So, I apologize for coming a little hot on this topic a little earlier. I'm sixty-eight, I spent half my life dealing with this stuff, so I'm very fast, I'm very fast. But yes, to Mr. Bonner's credit, the Newsletter Journal does advertise, I know for sure in my meeting that I conduct here close to week, and KSL Radio does the same for free. So, I want you to acknowledge that, I really appreciate that because it's important. So, again, sorry, but thank you.
Any other discussion? So, there's a motion to say we're going to table it for the next meeting, consecutive, nothing else. We're going to, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Bonner, I, I think this is a good way to look at both, because your new proposal is a little different from your other one. And I agree that getting the whole community involved is important. So, I, we're gonna postpone it for two weeks while we review it, and then we'll figure out what the next, where we're gonna go with it. There, I think there's some merit to what Commissioner Todd's saying that, I mean, I'm not a doctor, so I mean, can't go to a hospital and say, "Would you do heart surgery?" I, I don't know. I'm not an expert at this. I mean, I'm familiar with addiction very much with my own stepson. But I, if I had the answers, he wouldn't be addicted anymore. So, so that's where I stand with that. So, we'll bring this up again, please join us at the next meeting, and we'll go from there.
I will, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I guess, will you create, do you have copies of this, so that could be emailed to anybody? And then email, maybe, I'll send you a copy of the one that Ms. Hoot sent to me, so that you can, unless you guys are okay with just reading that. Or I could, I'll forward this one to you guys.
Okay, that would be great.
Still haven't heard of Mr. Campbell, unless you have. So, need to get the fire under, I don't know. This is how it usually goes, right? So, maybe we can put it on the next one.
Have you received any other buttons from him?
We have received, no, just that same check we talked about last time. So, we'll light a fire under him, hope.
Commissioners, have any comments about it?
Just stay on top, put the heat on if you can.
We okay to move on, or do we need to update some of that here? No, just need a response at this point. Moving on to HR position slash job description.
What she's doing now is, that's those up to you guys.
Just to give the commissioners a heads up, so one of the board members from the fairgrounds has asked if we could wait until two, because she can't be here at one-thirty. So, when we recess, we'll, if you guys are okay with it, we'll go, we'll come back at two.
We, we touched on this last meeting a little bit, because through just some conversations, I had a visit with someone who could possibly help us out, very reasonable with some human resources things. But to do it properly, I know we, we pretty much agreed on a vote last February about looking into, always looking into someone in human resources position, and at that time, put it in the county attorney's office temporarily. I think they've done a good job, but I think they'd like to have some help on it. To do it properly, I think we need to vote to do a position. So, we came up with a job description, so we could advertise it, to be fair. We need to advertise it for maybe other people who'd be interested in the opportunity. So, I guess to go on, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and have a, a job position for a human resource generalist, a contract position. That position would basically start our human resources department, so to speak, not department, but get all our records in order, start a timekeeping organizational chart, look at training, start doing some sexual harassment training and other training we need, and do all those things that, to get it, the basic problems that we have taken care of, so then we can go forward and actually do it properly according to law, according to federal law and state law. You know, it's always been down through the courthouse. That is changing through the state. A lot of counties are changing because they've come up with some of the same problems we had in dealing with human resources. So, across the state, there's more and more counties starting to have their own human resources department. We don't have the money to necessarily have our human resource department, but I feel like we have the opportunity to possibly have someone come in and get us going in the right direction at a fairly reasonable cost. However, like I said, to be fair, if we approve the position, we also need to advertise it and give other people the opportunity to put in for that position. I sent this out to everybody, I don't know if they got to read it, but it's fairly, it's fairly lengthy, talking about qualifications, what skills you need to have. The position will also be kind of clear, go ahead.
Can I second her motion for discussion?
You know, I don't even know where it's stopped.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do you want me to, yes.
I'll second Vera's motion for discussion.
Thank you.
So, the motion reads, just to clarify, Vera wanted to move to advertise for a, and establish, establish and advertise a human resource position paying roughly, paying fifteen hundred dollars a month?
Correct.
Contract employee.
Contract employee.
So, clarify that, that means no benefits?
No benefits. And as a contract employee, you know, we get to the point where we don't need them anymore, and we could possibly take it over again, and somewhere else, we could do that.
I gotta comment on, to go along with what Suzie had brought up earlier, one of the main reasons why we did put a hiring freeze, because of the snow budget. My question is, do we have funding for this proposed contract?
We, we've been discussing going, oh, I'm sorry. We've been discussing re-upping with Employers Council, which is seven thousand dollars a year, which personally, I don't think we've gotten that much out of. And Employers, Employers Council is for supervisory people only, they do not take care of hourly people. The, the companies that I looked at online that are similar to Employers Council that takes care of hourly employees also, they start at about nineteen-hundred a month for basic, just basic help and, and problems. But if you, if you have anything serious, you needed investigations, like we've come to know now from Employers Council, that, that's always extra. So, in my mind, for a little bit more, we could have someone that we could work with locally to get, to get our problem solved, hopefully.
I guess my hope in this, the fifteen hundred dollars a month, we didn't get that number from the individual, did you?
Not really, no.
I guess my only concern is that we're not really doing apples to apples for people if this is what somebody's come in and quoted to one of our board members. But secondarily, I, my other concern is, is you're talking about, it's gonna be about eighteen thousand a year. And Employers Council right now costs us seven thousand dollars a year. And my knowledge, it has always only cost us seven thousand dollars a year, except for one incident this last year, where it actually increased to another six thousand, roughly.
Never paid.
Somewhere around there.
So, I mean, we did have a, a highlight year where it wasn't more expensive. So, but we're still under that eighteen thousand dollar. And I will give you that somebody on the other end of the phone doesn't offer what somebody in an office might offer. And the, the part that I do listen to is, Ms. Leonardson has been in here multiple times, that once she started to figure out the ins and outs of what Employers Council did offer, the more she liked what they had to offer. And we just gave sixty thousand to the fair board, which I think we have to. But another eighteen thousand right now, before we do the budget, is concerning me. I, I would prefer to wait a few months before we make a decision on something like that.
He, my first, he's, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sure I was. My only concern is too, we were supposed to be temporary, and we don't mind doing it. It's just, it puts us, attorneys working on these issues in precarious situations sometimes. Being an investigator and attorney at the same time doesn't work. So, that creates a problem for the county as we started to experience. And quite honestly, it becomes uncomfortable, especially in our, our small community. We should be giving the legal advice, not doing the investigations. So, if we got Employers, and I'm not disagreeing with you necessarily, we've got Employers Council involved with every investigation, it's gonna skyrocket that price. But having it with us, right, it's, it's just, the more we do it, the more problems I'm encountering. And I would prefer if we figured something else out myself in that office. That's my two cents, I appreciate it.
And Employers Council is just set up for supervisors. It, there's nowhere for an hourly person to call in for help unless they go through their supervisor. And typically, that's not something an hourly person's going to want to do, because most of the time, their problem's going to be in their work environment and possibly with the supervisor. So, to, to contract someone to have a, a phone number where your hourly employees could also get help is going to cost more than seven thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so, first question, I'm just gonna ask Nathan, you just said you gave sixty thousand dollars to the fairgrounds. Wasn't that to the library?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to straighten that out first, because I know the fairgrounds is gonna jump right on top of that one. And where, where are you going to house this person? How are you, what are you gonna supply them with? And how often are they going to be here?
We typically, we, we talked about it, and it would be maybe twenty-five to thirty-two hour a week for this person at first. I'm sure they're gonna be very busy setting everything up. And then if we, if things work well, you know, maybe we could see having them on an all-call base, on-call basis. Maybe they have a phone number, people can call, they'll also do training, keep track of training.
Well, where are you gonna put them?
I think there might be room down at the county attorney's office for files and a desk.
There might be, there might.
Because we talked about that, we were worried about if we let you go in there with your private practice, we wouldn't have room for that, but.
We might, we might be able to.
And then you're gonna have to supply them with a computer and all that stuff too, right? So, there's gonna, it's gonna come to some expense of the county.
But if it's an HR, it's gonna have to be a room where nobody can see who's going in there. You're not gonna just have to have a file.
No, I don't think that's true for human resources. I think it's pri, you know, it needs to be private, but.
But a private in for someone else isn't private.
Well, and that's something that they could work out on the phone or whatever. That's, that would be looking ahead a little bit too far.
But just, I, I agree with the concern on the money. I, this is obviously something that we've run into a couple of times, but, and I've kind of sadly, you know, talking to Jeremiah and those kind of, and I think at the WCCA, I wasn't able to go down this pass right. I don't know if Commissioner Wagner was able to go, but they had a meeting that I've heard a little bit about, about HR. A lot of counties are going to an HR because of the separation. And I've heard, I've heard the courthouse head say, "We don't want somebody that's here, but we don't want the lawyers, the lawyers, even the attorney doing it." But at what point, I mean, I, how do we solve problems? And the truth is, is just what Commissioner Todd said last meeting. It's very difficult when you're a county official to be held accountable. Now, you should, as a county-elected official, hold yourself accountable. And it's not directed towards any one person here, so don't go there with that. And it's not directed towards any one person here, so don't go there with that. What it is, is that what does a county employee do? That, what do they do and where do they go to? Because it's been very unclear by the people in this building that I've talked to that, well, yeah, I didn't go to my department head because that's the problem. Or I didn't know who was in charge and I don't feel comfortable doing that. And I don't feel comfortable going to the attorney. So you scratch your head and go, what if? And I'm not saying anything is, but when they have an issue, how do we resolve it? Because we just put out a handbook that we spent an exorbitant, you know, in my opinion, a lot of money on. And if we give no solutions on this handbook and we hear things like, well, we can't tell the elected official, and that includes myself, because I'm an elected official or any one of the commissioners here, if we can't tell them that they have to do any of it, what was the point in doing any of it in the first place? So there's no way to hold anybody accountable for it. And honestly, and I've said this to Jeremiah, I cannot believe there is not a mechanism once an investigation is done, and whether it's valid or not valid, holding the people accountable for false accusations or literal labor laws that are in the state of Wyoming that are being violated, whether it's corporation or an elected official. How is there no mechanism? And we just throw up our hands and go, what? Commissioner Taylor's an elected official. He can do whatever he wants to do. I don't know what we do here. I don't have the answer, but I would like to be able to figure it out. I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Todd.
I think there is a mechanism and it's a lawsuit against the county or the elected official. And when you vote for people in a community, you need to be responsible who you vote for and understanding what that individual may or may not be like and their concern over their actions. I think there's a million different facets to that. The other problem is, you know, you're right, there's false flags that are put out there. And I'm not 100% convinced, the most recent one wasn't that, after some more, listening to what occurred afterwards, so.
And I don't disagree with you just saying that.
Yeah, I think that there is problems. I don't know if this is going to solve it. It might. I don't know if the other avenue that we have currently is going to solve it either. I do know that I would be more inclined to know that we have $20,000 extra dollars because there has been a lot of years where we only spent $7,000 a year on what we had. And I don't know what to do. I just...
I think your valid point is, my worry is, is that at some point, we're going to have somebody brave enough, whatever you want to call it, that the lawsuit may go against the county official, but ultimately, it's still the county constituents that are going to pay for whatever we need to do. And I just wish we, I wish I had the answer because I don't. I just don't, like you said, I don't know what to do at this point.
As an elected official, they're responsible for their own actions and it's not that they're...
Yeah, that comes into their scope, yeah.
Yeah, so if they're doing something illegal.
Well, but like the labor laws, what he was saying, it's, we have labor laws. We can't, if I had a secretary or I had an assistant and I said, look, you're just a terrible person and I just think you suck and this is the way it is. And there's no recourse for, even this agency, this subscription that we're providing to, they don't talk to the employees. So there really is no counseling, no advisement, which is why, you know, I think this started in the beginning. I don't know what to do about that portion of it because we bring them in and they can tell us. But in reality, it's an elected official, like we all know, it's very difficult. And yeah, we can wait four years and you can say, well, the constituents can decide. But many of the constituents don't come to the meetings. Many of the constituents don't know the inner workings of the courthouse. And many of the constituents don't know that. So whether it's a false claim, I think that needs to be addressed. Or if it's a county elected official, I don't think four years is an appropriate way to say, well, wait four years and how many other people get hurt from meantime? Or how many people, false accusations are made on county employees? I just feel like that HR would balance that out somehow. And I don't, I don't have the claim to know all the right answers. But I feel like the direction we're in, here we are. We've had several HR issues this year. Go ahead.
Okay, I had an issue several years back that I found out that I was going against a bunch of elected officials. I found out that I'm on my own and that county attorney takes care of the county.
Well, and you're making my point for me. So whatever happens, whether it's false claims, not false claims, there's got to be a reason.
And that's the issue though.
Yep.
If it's, if it's a HR issue, we're supposed to be giving new advice. But then if we're also doing...
But you're also representing the county.
Yep.
And she's the county too.
Yeah, I'm a county employee.
The elected officials.
Yeah, see, I was a county employee going against county employees. And I was on my own. I had to hire my own attorney. And then you, not necessarily you, but county attorney represented the board.
Yeah.
And you'll find that HR is the same thing.
Exactly. They represent the board and all of us are on our own, even the employees.
I'll add Vera in the new agenda.
I feel like the HR person is preemptive, is a preemptive strike. You wouldn't have as many problems, I really believe, if you had more training on how to deal with problems in your offices, more training with hourlies and helping them understand their positions. And sometimes if people just had that phone number to call and ask a question or ask if their complaint is valid or get some help, sometimes it's just a matter of having somebody listen to your problem and give you a little advice. That can stop a lot of these big issues from coming down the pipe. I feel like if a couple of the things that happened in this last year that became huge issues, if they would have been dealt with immediately when they started, they would have never gotten to that point. And a lot of that is training and understanding and communication. And that's where the HR person would come in.
I have some problems with this. A lot of the descriptions of this job is designated to the clerk's office by statute.
I saw that.
Some of this stuff is. You know, the payroll, there's a lot of this stuff where she worked. Becky does the agendas with this. There's so much of that stuff is the clerk's duties. Second thing is, this person will not be able to do these investigations. Like we had to pay the workers, the council, we had to pay them extra to conduct the investigation. This individual won't be able to do, they're not a lawyer. They're not going to be able to do these investigations. We're still going to be paying that out of pocket. You know, this person isn't going to sit down and do the investigation. They're going to reach out to a lawyer that's trained and educated in this stuff. And on the other end of it, heck, I qualify. I've been an HR person for 27 years dealing with employees. I was HR. I had all the positions of that business, but I'm not qualified to do HR stuff. And I, but I could say I was in Human Resources for 20 years dealing with employees. I'm totally against this position. We went and put a hiring freeze on. Now all of a sudden, we're going to hire somebody? We don't know what it's going to cost us in the end, you know? But Michael, are you still going to foot all the bill for the, all the expenses down Tanix? If you put this person down there, is this person going to have to start drawing money for that? You know, for supplies, that kind of stuff. I can see, you know, oh, okay, I didn't get it quite done. I'm working 40 hours this week. Then all of a sudden, here you become, even though you're a contract employee, you're working 40 hours. Who's going to draw the line? Are you going to become a full-time employee or are you going to stay contract with benefit? You know, I'm against this position right now until we got a lot better solution.
Let's go through those. I'm sorry, repeat the motion.
Vera moved to go ahead and establish and advertise for HR Resource Position at $1,500 a month at, I don't know the hours.
25 to 32.
32 hours.
Per week, I'm sorry.
All those in favor of making an HR position and advertising, please say aye. All those opposed? Public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes.
When is the handbook supposed to be handed out? When that's supposed to be by the end of January?
There was a sign that Jeannie's got to take it out for all of the elected officials and the right heads to sign off on it. And then we can approach it with a different way. I'm glad it's printed.
So it's still, so it's not finalized?
It is finalized.
It's finalized?
The printing wasn't completed.
It just needs to be signed by everybody and then we're approaching it differently, possibly.
No, the printing's going to stay the same as far as I know, but she still has to do everybody's signature.
Jeannie does.
Yeah, I thought we were looking at the possible option of printing it here.
We haven't really talked about that.
Okay. That's something that we should probably put in there. Okay, we'll put it on the next agenda. I'm sure that's going to... Commissioners' comment.
Wait, wait. Public comment. Okay. I'd like to address something Mr. Todd said last week about where the money's going to come from, and I'm paraphrasing.
I'm sorry, sir.
Rick King, A-I-N-T. And I'm going to lob the grenade out here since I'm sitting between probably some polar opposites. I text you. Yeah, you bet. This is about the money. You are the treasurer, right?
Yes, I am.
Here we go. So this is my home and I own three pieces of property in Weston County that I pay taxes on every year, okay? I support the homestead exemption only and I'll tell you why, okay? First of all, property taxes in Wyoming are good. They're not great, but they're good. They're better than most, but not as good as Tennessee, not as good as Delaware. I own the properties in all those places, okay? People are hurting right now, okay? I remember what it was like when I had four kids at the house, two of them in diapers and living paycheck to paycheck, or you take the elderly that are on a fixed income. I'm on a fixed income right now and it ain't enough, okay? So that's why I support the homestead exemption, but I try not to raise an issue without offering a solution, okay? So I sold the cleaners next door, you know, I bought the building across the street because I just can't help myself, the old print shop. And I don't support a property tax exemption on that. However, I want to give you an example about land. I own 120 acres on Beaver Creek Road, okay? I own 100 acres in Texas, 2,500 an acre. The exemption they had there was an agriculture exemption. I grew trees. In Tennessee, I had 282 acres. They called it a green belt. Same thing, I grew trees. Both of those were about $800 a year. My property taxes here on 100 acre, 120 acres on Beaver Creek Road are less than $100 a year, okay? In order to get that $100 a year exemption, I have to produce $500 of income, which I do legitimately. I spent $2,000 on fertilizer and drilled out a half a whole nine yards, but I make my $500, okay? Barely. So I think there's a lot of money left on the table there. I don't want my taxes to go up, but I mean, pay less than $100 a year on a piece of property, it's probably worth, you know, who knows, because this market is crazy. That's, I don't agree with it. I know two ranchers very well here locally. One of them, if you raise his property taxes, you're going to put him out of business, all right? Because, you know, I mean, he's, how do you make a living running 120 head of cattle? I have no idea how you pay your bills on that. But then you've got people like, what was his name? Eschman, the guy with the corner crossing deal. He's a multi-billionaire, pharmaceutical billionaire out of the Carolinas somewhere. He owns all this land out there, so I promise he's been doing the same thing that I'm doing as he's gone a few head of cattle out there. He doesn't even live in the state and he's getting these property taxes that are ridiculously low rate. Moski, there's 1158 acres inside Weston County. The rest is up there in Cook County. I don't know what they're paying for taxes, but same thing. Let's throw a few cows out here and get these property taxes reduced. Bruce Springsteen put bees on his property to reduce so he didn't have to pay the property taxes. So in the words of Donald Trump, when Donald Trump and Hillary were going at each other and she says, you don't pay your fair tax, share of taxes, and I'm paraphrasing here, he says, that makes me smart. Well, again, I'm paying $87, it'll go up, I'll put a structure on there. I'm paying $87 a year for 120 acres. I don't think that's enough, so. One last comment, and this is, by the way, my little twisted brain works. On the Article 3, Section 3, if Texas has got 38 congressmen, we have one. By the way, she's doing a pretty good job. 766,987 per congressman. State of Wyoming's got 574,000 and change. So what, after 237 years, they decide, well, you know, we just added another 10 million people. I know they're not legal, but they still count on congressional districting. You don't have enough people, so therefore, let's just, you know, we're going to add a few counties in here from some of these other states to even up the story because you're 200,000 people short. Well, I look at this as kind of the same thing. I want representation from my county, somebody that lives in my county. And, you know, so then next thing you know, there's, by the way, I did a feasibility study here. We're going to start a business. There's 250,000 people in nine counties, pretty sparsely. And that includes Tannington, you know, Cook, anyway, bottom line. So next thing you know, they're adding a handful of counties from South Dakota, Montana, whatever. And then we get a congressperson elected from that place instead of my home of Wyoming. Since, to me, it's kind of the same thing. You know, again, as a citizen of this county, I want representation from this county. And with that, I yield.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, Commissioners' comment?
I was down in Cheyenne for WCCA's bill review. There's a lot of property tax bills up there. Every one that's out is going to hurt the county's revenue. The WCCA as a whole basically is supporting House Bill 45 and Senate File 6, I think 63, which they mirror each other. It's got the 5% cap on it. No matter what we do, it's going to hurt our coffers. The WCCA, as a group, as a whole, comes to the conclusion, we are going to have to support one, support one, or we're going to get some crammed down our throat that we absolutely do not want. That is the approach they took with why they're supporting House Bill 54, or 45 and Senate File 63 is, overall, the big picture is probably going to hurt the least across the state. Some are tailored, you can see how some of these bills were wrote. They're targeting a certain group of people and not the whole state in general. But otherwise, there's a lot of bills, probably over half the bills did not even make it out of committee this year. There's, the timeframe was so short, so the interim will be flooded with bills that are carried over. That's kind of in a nutshell what happened down in Cheyenne. Anything, any questions about it?
There's a bill, it's at least in committee right now to raise property taxes 5% a year for the next 10 years. I don't remember the number.
If it's in committee, it's dead.
Well, I don't know.
Because they had to be... They had to be out by last night.
Yeah.
If they didn't make it out...
It was a week ago, so.
Oh, if they didn't make it out by, they're pretty well done. Because there was a whole slew of them died in committee. Did not even make it out of the door. So, on a good note, the direct distribution bill was at 105 million. We heard rumors they was going to try to put an amendment to get it to 175, which was great. But the House settled on 1/46th and a quarter. That was what it was funded at last year, the direct distribution was. So that made it out of House. It should go through Senate. So the direct distribution bill should be funded at 140. So the direct distribution should be funded at 1/46th and a quarter. Positive note of that is, we're probably gonna get a little bit bigger share of that because Cook County stepped out of hardship counties. One of their mills is over 300,000, so they are out of hardship counties, so it's gonna put more into the hardship county fund.
Awesome.
We don't have hardship anymore.
What?
There's no more hardship.
No, there is.
Or is this called something different?
No, it's there. It is hardship counties in the Madden formula that funds the direct distribution money.
Okay, okay.
That is, they're not on the hardship, it's not consensus money. So.
Okay.
And.
Good, that'll bump us.
Washeki County is at 192,000 per mill, we are 204 per mill. So we are, we're fighting for second to the bottom. We're running a tough race there, but just on a, on a positive note.
Five counties that are still.
Oh, six.
There was six, but it's five.
There was seven, now there's six.
Now it's six.
Six counties, six hardship counties, so.
I don't think we'll ever come out of the hardship county category.
That was, that was a positive note. And we were fighting to keep the FNRPA funding. And they're actually talking about putting a little more money into FNRPA funding. For those that don't know, FNRPA pays Drew Bauer. She pays us to go fight on the national level for our public lands.
She helps us, she doesn't pay us.
We pay, the FNRPA pays her, she, I said she fights for us. So.
I'll have to check the tape.
Yeah, okay, correct me. But that's kind of in a nutshell what happened down there.
Thanks for going in.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks.
That's it.
That's, any more commissioners' comments? The only thing I'd add is, is that we've got budget coming up and that we need to put together and start thinking about workshops to meet with each of the department heads and when we're gonna do that. Hopefully, like you were saying, we gotta start thinking about it. Go ahead.
I do have something. When I made the motion to table that for a month, is that an Upton meeting?
Um, oh, no, I said that we would do it the first meeting in April because the people that aren't gonna be able to make it, that are gonna need to be on Zoom, we can't do it. So I said it would be the first meeting in April. Yes. I made sure they knew it wouldn't be the last meeting in March, but the first meeting in April, cause of that.
Go ahead.
Uh, maybe we should kind of look ahead for that meeting? Do we need to be in a larger area to do that?
The only thing is, is the legislators, the senators and stuff that can't be here will have to be on Zoom.
We might be able to use the court or anything.
I don't know their links, it won't.
She might be able to hook us up.
I'll have to ask her.
I was wondering the same thing, you're probably not a bad, just at least for that portion of it.
That might be something to visit with Tina about if we can tie into the legislative stuff and then just move it up there and just put a new, put a new link out for that meeting.
Well, we should be able to pull our stuff up on their screens. But I don't know, cause there's a totally separate system than ours. There's all, is all court and I don't know if we can even link in or even create a thing.
There's gotta be a login for it because there's, they have people from different places logging.
But there's this all court stuff, I don't know if we can have access to that.
We could probably.
I bet you can.
There's, there's gotta be a way to get around it.
You're talking about the room in general?
No, 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 we can get in the room. I'm talking about their team stuff.
Getting their.
It's all, it's all the legal stuff.
Gotcha.
Different, I don't know how, if we can do that.
We're gonna just check the chart and maybe he can tell us if there's a way to transfer this somehow up there. There's gotta be a way, I would think. Maybe just going on the internet and bringing it up.
I think you can probably just go up and open a meeting up in that room and then it's opening this room and that room. Right?
I'm not tech savvy, don't ask me.
I look Italians for Charles.
All right, so we're gonna adjourn until two?
No, that is not a meeting. We're actually adjourning our meeting, that's just a workshop.
That's just a workshop.
So we are gonna adjourn and then we'll be back at two o'clock for the workshop with the board.